Yes.
Yes.
Not me.
Recording.
Should have been you to me, you know? Okay. What, what, what?
Microphone.
Look at you. Well. Public comments on non-adjunct items are, yes.
Can you tell me the date that you all voted for the special town meeting? I've watched the six meetings several times. I don't see where there was a vote in this also minutes from that meeting. So I can't confirm. I heard Greg said that the date was, but there was no vote.
So the official vote was when they approved the warrant in thirteen.
So the select board doesn't have to go up, just so I understand.
Select would have to vote on the warrant.
But not on the date.
And the warrant includes the date.
The warrant includes the date.
Okay.
If they approve the date on the sixth as a two standard of date.
As a candidate game, we didn't, we may not have voted on it.
Correct.
Are there any other comments from? The next item is the chairman's report. Of which there is nine. And we're supposed to go over the select word action items. Which are all for future dates. Is there anything else that should be on the selection action items?
Not there were three on today.
Today, yes, I'm sorry. Yes. The shuttle service for beach funds. The senior, senior center. School Street sidewalks, harbor management. Compensation study. The least cheap contract. Water resource protection update. The glass bowl discussion.
So maybe those things that are not being discussed tonight, Greg could just.
Yeah.
Greg, is it, is it the next meeting that those items can be discussed or?
Many of those are in fact being discussed. I, I work at it and said the campaign twenty of others. And low and behold.
I think it's like the senior center, the harbor masters, harbor management plan, compensation study. Those are the ones that are not on tonight's agenda. Can we discuss them at the next meeting or?
It looks like. Yeah. So that would be on the July sixth. That would move on to the. Public forum for the following watch. You can find me Greg and I can hear my screen. You do this one. Why don't you do it? Once again, we're going over the seven articles for the county. This is a question and answer session. There. Is no comment. The warrant has already been approved, so we can't change the articles directly. When the motion survey, it would be possible for people to move to event the motions. And just the likely way to do that is to. Put your, give your amendment to Alan Wilson ahead of time in writing. Um, if you think of something at the last moment. Break it down and must forward to Alan. Trying to deal with amendments on the floor verbally is just very hard. Makes very hard to run meeting. Um, the first article is a district school budget. The proposition, the reason that we're having this meeting is that the proposition to an app override vote failed in Essex. Um, and the school committee got together and put together a compromise budget that preserves program. And does not lay off teachers. However, it does reduce. The number of teachers. By an additional two point nine five full time equivalents. And reduces the number of teaching assistants. So the program is intact, but thinner than it was intended. The agreement reduces Manchester's share of the district apportionment by four hundred and ninety-one thousand. Six hundred and ten dollars. And we are going to ask the finance committee and the select board. Ask that the voters at the county meeting approve the budget. Are there any questions? Article two. Is. More complicated. And, and not getting any simpler as we get closer. The. Both turf fields are older than look have been in use for longer than their anticipated life. They're used hard and they need to be replaced. They. The school district is paying for the replacement out of. Their expendable reserves. With the intention that somehow the reserves will be replenished. And. The plan had been that the school would undertake that. There's reluctance on both sides to pay the fees and interest on debt. And reluctance also to agree to an indebtedness now in a matter. When we don't know what the final amount is actually going to be. So just go on to the next slide if you would briefly. And this is part of the reason it's complicated. There are two fields. Highland field at the high school, which will be paid for primarily by. Two thirds by Manchester approximately two thirds by Manchester, one third by Essex. In the reimbursement. The. Second field is the Brook Street field, also known as the Coach Ed Field Field. His name was Ed Field. They're not putting money into Ed anymore. Great teacher, but yes. So half of that is paid for by Manchester's parks and rec. And we have already, Manchester's has already. Agreed to pay that, which is approximately four hundred thousand dollars. Two thirds of the remaining half. Would fall to Manchester. Um, and. One. Third or one sixth of the total would fall to Essex. And. Add to that the complexity of, of, does the school take on debt? Does the school ask the towns to make a capital investment? On their, at their next town meetings, which are likely to be in November. Or. I don't know what the or is, but there, there are. Apparently more alternatives, so. That's why. What we're asking to be approved. At this town meeting is to take four hundred thousand dollars of the money that Manchester saves by going to the compromise budget. And dedicated to paying for the fields. And. That would leave a very small piece of what Manchester owes. To be part of the school debt or part of, or Manchester could, could pay it from reserves or we could decide. It's a borrow it ourselves. But that's none of that is what we're talking about tonight or at the town meeting. What we're talking about at the town meeting is saying that. Four hundred thousand dollars of what Manchester saves in the compromise budget will be used to pay for the field repairs. And. That reduces borrowing costs if, if, if there is borrowing. That.
Some question in chat is, is this an addition to what already was voted on? The answer is yes.
Yes, we, in, in this, in this slide, in the purple. The dark purple is the four hundred thousand dollars that we've already contributed. It is because the field behind at Brook Street. Behind Memorial School is used. About halftime by Manchester Parks and Rec. And, and the regional agreement states that. The town and the school will split the cost of maintenance of that field. So that four hundred thousand dollars already approved the previous town meeting.
Anne, if I may.
Yep.
When people wish to speak or ask questions, we ask for name and address. And I think in chat, we should do the same.
You can turn off the chat and people can raise their hands.
Or, yeah, muffin.
That's not muffin.
Muffin has raised her hand.
Right, but the person who spoke from I eight two seven seven zero five, whoever was in the chat.
Okay, thank you. Can you add your name and address in the chat?
Looks like we're saying. So we, I'm sure we'll send you Rogers, I'm sorry.
Muffin.
Yes, I am. I am Muffin Driscoll, thirty-three Bridge Street. And what is the total cost to replace?
Um, that was kind of broken up. You asked for the total cost.
The total cost to replace the Brook Street surface.
Each field is about eight hundred thousand dollars. So Manchester has already appropriated four hundred for the parks and rec use.
Right, so if we were to appropriate. Now, the monies. As a result of the lower compromise. Wouldn't we be funding almost the entire hundred thousand?
We're also funding part of Highland with that money.
Oh, okay. All right, thank you very much.
Are there any other? Questions? Okay. The next. Oh, okay. Article three. Is a zoning article. It proposes to replace section twelve, which is administration and procedures with an entire reading section. And. Those of you who are. Watching can read it more easily than I can, the various things that, that, that it does. Are there questions on article three? There'll be. Chris, will there be handouts? At the town meeting?
Yes, will be endless. And the warrant itself as well. And there are. Various descriptions of the administrative changes in section twelve. On the website, including a side by side comparison of the two line by line pretty much. So. Residents can go to the town website, to the playing board website and. Get as much information as they want.
Alan, yes.
Thank you, Anne. I just want to mention for Chris's benefit, I emailed this to Ron and Sarah earlier today, but the, the motions will need to include. The, all the language that is included in the proposed amendments. And, and those will need to be in the form of a handout at the meeting. You're welcome.
Okay. If article three does not pass. There is an article four. The town meeting will consider. Will pass over if article three succeeds. It reintroduces the criteria for site plan review, which was inadvertently. Brought during the fall town, last fall town meeting. And it uses legacy language. Chris, do you have anything?
I was just saying that it's not inadvertent, it was. But it was taken out, it was taken out on purpose because we're replacing it with better language. The inadvertent part was not getting to section twelve in the last time.
Sorry.
So the result was that we don't have a site plan review section in the zoning bylaw. And this article would simply replace what was taken out.
And. There's newer, better language in article three.
New section twelve is a, does a better job of explaining segment review. It provides better criteria for them. Maybe more to use or any other special permit granting authority. To the reviews and project.
Are there? Any other questions on this? Any article five? Article five is also something. It covers what they. Interest and they refer to as Scribner's errors, which is. Nineteenth century concept. When people were copying and didn't always copy correctly. The reworking of the zoning bylaws has been extensive and things have been renumbered. And there were oversights in this article.
You know, they, they are, there are no changes to any policy or anything. It's just fixing some mostly references to other sections. But one section refers to another section. We want to make sure that we provide the right numbers to review. So it's, it's pretty simple. I think the existing bylaws got a bunch of existing. Then references as well, so it's not, this is not magical, it's just what happens.
Any, are there any questions or comments on article five? Article six. We have a lot of profit that. Pass inspection of Massachusetts. We're, it's a large expenditure for an unusual special town meeting. But there's a two year lead time. And we have the funds in hand in the fire equipment reserves that we've been building up over ten years. And. At this town, at this. Select board meeting. We will prove the sale of one of our other trucks. And that will provide the addition, the, the funds beyond what's available in America. The current truck should be very marketable outside of Massachusetts. And to, to deal with the two year lead time for a brand new ladder truck. Our incoming fire chief, we work for a demonstration model or. A used truck that is in suitable condition. I have a moment there that. Did you stop and comment? Yeah. Says Manchester by the sea will need to pay. Did you?
This is what I wrote back to Sandy.
No, okay. That's. So no effect on the tax rate. They're planning for the, for, for replacement of the truck for sometime. And I see no hands, no questions. So let's turn to article seven. The salary. We're creating a salary reserve account to deal with. Union, primarily with union contracts that have settled. So that people can get your pay increase on Jan, on July first. As they, as at the start of the. This deposit, the total fifty thousand dollars, which covers the summer contracts. And overtime for. Fire department, because two of our new hires will not be out. Out of school for the certification until the middle of July. The next slide for anyone. Uses these slides on, sees these slides online is a series of links to more information.
Nice slides, very helpful.
Will they be shared at the town meeting itself or? Is it why we can't?
We could put these up as part of the voting.
It might be helpful because we, I think we got some, you know, twenty people last, last time, but they're, they're very helpful. And we noticed if everybody votes can.
Something that we need to take up with Alan.
Yeah.
The suggestion is to have these slides visible, this slide visible at the town meeting?
Not the questions and links, because I don't think that's the time to be chasing links. Right, but as a way of introducing each article. The. Slides for the article.
I think we can do that. I think we should also have people who are speaking to them, however.
Um, we can chop them up and as, as we decide who is going to be introducing each article. They can have. If that pleases you, Alan.
Quick question, Alan. So, so what appears behind you at the introduction of each article? Is it the actual amendment copy or is it at our pleasure or your pleasure?
It's, it's, well, in some cases, they're much too long to display.
Yes, they are, they are long, yeah.
The zoning, the zoning articles can't be displayed effectively. Because if you put them up, the, the type would be too small for people to read. So what, what is generally shown is the, is the motion. But in the case of the zoning articles, we'll need to abbreviate that.
I, I personally think these slides would be much more helpful than the motion. I, I just, Alan, I, I, you know, in, in other town meetings that I've been to, there has been a similar setup. Where to your point, you have somebody talk to a, a slide which summarizes the, the article. And it's, it's been very well received and I think helps people understand which is the goal.
Well, of course, but the motion is what people are voting on.
True, and.
So, so we could, we could introduce perhaps with. An English language slide. And then during the discussion and voting, put up the actual motion.
Yeah, yes.
Or set some whatever the planning board would put up for school motions that are very long.
Well, that makes sense.
Andrew Ron, who has another comment, Anne, yes. That says the total math needs to be shown on the field. Both what was approved last town meeting and this request. And how each is being paid by reserves, by tax, by override. And then split between Essex and Manchester by the city.
Yeah, I'm raising my hand if, if I can be recognized. I just think the way that it was shown here without the numbers in two different pie charts based on the field. I think it's, it was a bit confusing and I think everyone, like, I wasn't sure if we were revoting. Because of the way that Essex voted, how much we're incurring with, you know, loans. It's, it was pretty confusing. So I think if there's a visual way to break it down, I think it will help everyone immensely.
So when I had suggested the pie charts, my thought was that each slice would be annotated with. I think what Sandy is basically suggesting, you know, this has already been approved.
Right.
Dollar amount and just explaining what each slice is a little bit, so.
Yeah, I think that will help a lot and then like be very clear about what, what the ask is, where that money's coming from. And I thought we had voted in, I have to go back, I don't have it in front of me. I thought we voted in a larger amount to start with than just the four hundred. So just following everything will be very helpful.
Oh, so okay, rather than having a side conversation. I believe we authorized the school to incur debt. And we did that both at the town meeting, in the annual town meeting and at the ballot.
Right.
For, that was for the school to borrow up to 1600, at 6, like 1.6 million dollars to do the whole tool, whole project. That amount was reduced because at the same town meeting, Manchester voted to appropriate $400,000 for its share of the Brooksfield. So that reduced the probable borrowing to a maximum of 1.2 million.
That came from fund balance.
And that that, yes, the 400 came from fund balance. Or as they say, Manchester reserves. The question now is how was that, how is that 1.2 actually going to be funded? And it's possible that we will go ahead and the school will borrow it. It is also possible, it is necessary that the school pay for it as ongoing. And their source for that money is a, is their school. They have some school choice reserves that they have left over from 10 years ago. Before they started putting the school choice reserves into each year's budget. So that's a non, that's a, that's a fund that's not, cannot be replenished, will not be replenished because that money now goes into the operating budget. So the school will pay because the work is going on this summer and, and their, neither town has has, the two towns have not put on the warrants monies to pay so that the, the cost, the capital cost can be transferred to the towns. There are several ways of doing that and it's not clear at the moment which one is, is. But yes, we can put it, we can put in the numbers approximately. One third, two thirds is only an approximation. We don't know exactly what the total is. So putting in hard numbers. But we can certainly put in approximate numbers.
Yeah, I guess, because this sort of sounds like an and on top of everything that was approved. So if we're borrowing and we're approved, what could be borrowed, once that we've approved it, do we still have to approve it, whatever we borrowed to be allocated to the actual spending? And that's what we're doing? Or is this going back to the coffers and saying, well, we need the 400 more than what we thought? So that's what I'm really confused about and there are probably others that will be as well.
So the total doesn't change.
The total doesn't change. What we're doing is taking some savings and saying, okay, rather than either the school, then the district borrowing 1.2, Manchester will put in 400,000 at the beginning, bringing that down to 800. And if Essex also decides that they want to put in something, then that may reduce the borrowing to 400. But the reason for putting this on the warrant now is that it means that most of the savings that we get from going to the compromised budget will be allocated specifically for the field and will not roll over into Manchester fund budget.
Yeah.
I hope that's a little clearer and I understand that it's not at all clear and, and we've got a week.
Pie chart.
Yeah, the pie charts with some labels. I think that's probably enough detail.
I didn't label what you have. I think that's all.
By, by tax. Yes, Alan.
Thank you, Anne. If I could just go back to the slides for a minute. I know Tiffany is working on the slide deck for the electronic voting system this week. So Greg, if you could send her the, the substantive slides, we can get those integrated.
Yes, I agree.
Thank you.
There are no more questions. Thank you both for coming.
Should have shown it down at the field where they're having a band.
I, I can hear the band from here and it sound pretty good.
The next article on our agenda is the National Grid.
Anne, Anne, excuse me.
Yes.
Before we leave town meeting, I know you're going to be discussing motions and assignments, speaking assignments later in the meeting. Unless you especially want me to rejoin for that, I, I will sign off, but I'm happy to come back if you would like me to.
Um, I think we, I think that's pretty much procedural and, and you should enjoy your evening. No, it's in the end, right?
I think it is, I think it is procedural. Just to add one, one suggestion, which I always make is that whoever is going to be the speaker on a particular article should also be the person to make the motion. And I will, I will, I will collect the assignments from Greg tomorrow.
Thank you very much for keeping us in line.
My pleasure, always. Thank you. Have a good evening. I'm going to open the window so I can listen to the band. Bye bye.
For the next 25 minutes. Greg, could you give us the town's finished figure sheet for?
I can't because I think it's so long.
But did you just send that?
Actually, it happened on Saturday. I apologize for that. So, uh, yes, I report this review calendars. So we, on 22nd Thursday of this week, we have a public forum, final public forum on the village vulnerability project. So that's taking a look at ways to mitigate flooding challenges that we will face going forward in the village area. And then that'll, the consultants that will wrap up their final report and get that report to you. And talk about next steps.
Is that something available for the public or is that?
Yes, so there'll be a public forum on Thursday evening, 6:30.
What are we doing public sensitive?
So it's been pushed up to our normal channels.
Okay.
So we have that coming up and then of course the, the Devil's Project meeting is meeting on the 27th. And then of course, the 28th is the special town meeting. With the July parade on the 4th. And then Thursday, the 6th will be your next regular meeting after tonight.
Is there anything in particular we need to do for the 4th of July?
Need to get the and, and order enough American flag, a little flag handed out.
Well, yeah, or maybe we need to get a little more selective at the beginning. But yeah, where do we get American flags?
Everyone under 12, yes, one.
That's, yeah. Um, I can circle back with you on that. And the golf carts are usually loaned to us by us. So we just need to get in touch with them a couple of weeks in advance.
Since you've taken on the flag, could you, could you get in touch with Essex?
I would happily get in touch with Essex. Yes. And do you want me to just go ahead and get the flags? I'm Debbie, my, but I I'll just make, I'll get, I'll be on top of flags and cards. Oh, and you need water.
Because you're going to get the water.
You're going to get the fluids, the water. You weren't talking, so we vomited.
Where are we getting that?
Just.
Okay, we can talk separately.
No outsides here.
Okay. So then your second meeting in July will be July 22. So then School Street, after some readings, delays with the contractor, in terms of them waiting for the equipment, in terms of grinding. His final laptop is down. So that's in much better shape. Obviously some cleanup work remains, including putting the striking down. That's a much better day than once. So that's, that's helping. We should not have any major detours as that finishes up. One of the action items was pipe dock compensation for department heads. And I think it would make sense to proceed with a formal compensation study, comparison study, so that we have a some third party confirmation of where our salary stand with, with other communities. So I'll be getting some quotes on that and presenting that to you hopefully at the next meeting. But then just want to give you a heads up that I think that's a step we should take and you can be thinking about that, but I would like to proceed and get those quotes. And we can talk a little bit more about that. But in addition to comparisons, it would also have expert in the field give us some guidance on how we might options for restructuring some of our approaches to pay for department leaders. Talk about merit and get some guidance on how to set that up as an alternative to the stare and coma approach. So that would be part of that, part of that stuff. It's a couple of three month project. Yeah. So by the fall, we should be able to have that in hand, which would be timely in terms of a bunch of discussions. If there were to be any adjustments that we want to go forward with earlier rather than later, it would be something we could talk about with the town. So it would keep that up pretty well for us on the other option. In terms of proceeding with that.
And my, um, I'm, do you, do you have an idea of which departments would need to be looked at first? Is there sort of a, a, do you know which ones might be?
Across the board. So the study would look at all departments. So it would collect that on across the board.
And that's including looking at, as it says here, the assistants or the
Crewmen.
Okay, good.
Yep.
So that played into succession planning and all that.
Exactly. Yeah, exactly right. And then my other note here was on senior center, we're continuing to wait for some responses, hopefully hopefully by next meeting. I've said that a few times now, but hopefully at our next meeting, we'll have some to get back to you on. So we continue to pursue. We've got three options in the half hour. So I want to have more information on all of the fires actually. So those were the, the four things I wanted to cover.
Okay.
Not two correspondence, if I can.
Yes.
Proceed with that. And one is from Agriculture Technical School. So they have approved a bond for construction of the new veterinary program building. Approaching about three, three million suffering. Yeah, so just under 3.4 million, 3.367 million. So we will see that as part of our assessment down the road. Once that is, that was completed. Our percentage is, is quite small in terms of the total enrollment. Our 12, 13 students, part of that whole, whole school is, is a very small fraction. So we don't own a big portion of this debt. It's, it's less than a percent of the total debt, but it will impact our assessment.
We currently carry some, have some, some assessment or debt that we're paying down for them.
Building, it's the main building that was redone or not redone, the, the new building that was built. How many years ago now? A few years ago. So yes, that's part of our
It's still current.
Assessment. Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And one of the things, apparently it will fall over onto us if we don't act. We, from the time that we got the notification that 45 days. I think what is the feeling of the board? Should we call another town meeting to consider this or should we just assume that even if we vote no?
You'll be out loaded. That's a good thing to listen.
Not have students attend.
So is, it is a consensus of the board that we just let this happen?
Yes.
Yeah.
Rather than let it happen, I would say, accept that it will happen. Okay. And I just, it is semantics, but I mean.
Okay. And then the, the other piece of correspondence, some concerns again with Mill Street has been in the past. I think they could raise its head again primarily because of some of the detour efforts that would, for School Street and actually it happened again today with a pretty major accident on the 128. People were getting off of the highway and going along the hill to, to get, get around the accident on the highway.
And the accident that occurred at the corner of school and wasn't that a school?
Pleasant the other day with the cars up near the bench.
Where the bench? Yeah. And I mean, in addition, I, I think it's we have bigger, faster vehicles. We have a nice speedy road on School Street right now. It's wide. It's not lined yet. It's, it's a townwide problem. It's not just townwide. It's everywhere wide. People are going much faster.
One of the things that was specifically asked was whether it was possible to work with the Essex County Club to have an alternate pedestrian. Cause there's no room for a sidewalk and it's a scenic drive, so we can't cut down trees. But perhaps there could be some other
Old path. Yes, through the wood, basically.
Those are what's basically.
Yeah. And so, right. As an alternative to a sidewalk or something.
As, as a way to avoid having pedestrians in the mix with.
Pedestrians with their dogs, because this specific individual talks about, and I think that that would be.
That was an idea that was kicking around. Didn't go anywhere, but I mean, we couldn't revisit it to see, but it was a possibility.
How, how did we leave this a year ago? We pushed around a number of ideas and.
So we'd put up additional stop signs.
Okay.
So there are a couple more stop signs on Forests to try to keep traffic in slower pace.
Have it on Mills, specifically this.
Your mill, this, this stretch.
I know we've spoken of speed bumps.
We didn't widen the one.
Speed play, plates or what do they call those things?
Speed table.
Tables, I guess.
Yep.
But we did, I don't think we did any, I, I think maybe the chief did some studies on speeds there. Did we get a report on that? We must have.
We did, we did, we got it from, but I, I, I mean, I
I just don't remember.
The other day I was driving down Pleasant, and a car went flying by me the other way, and I could read the speed limit sign that said on, it's 25 there, the guy was doing 39. That was one, the other day I was on Pine Street going to work, and big old truck pulled out and bombed in front of me, going significantly faster. And not to put anybody under the wheels of the bus, the police car was parked right there ostensibly checking speeds, monitoring speeds, this guy was bombing down the road. And I don't know what the answer is, they try to get out there and give a presence, and, and I, I think short of hiring more police officers who can then be out giving tickets, we just don't have the manpower to have people out there constantly monitoring and ticketing. So I think that's.
We, we did discuss on a different subject, or a different street, when we're talking about Pine Street, the fact that Massachusetts state laws may not allow us to automate the ticketing. Because in other, in other states, you, you just install the equipment and they send you a ticket.
Again, the law in Massachusetts.
My question is, who do we need to talk to to get the law changed?
Your senator, your representatives.
So is that worth pursuing? Because Becky is correct. In order to enforce, there's two ways of doing it, the human way or the automated way, and I don't have a good answer as to why the automated way is illegal. It works very well in other states, even if you rent a car, they'll, you'll get the bill eventually.
Car in France, you get the debt.
Right, so I don't know what the hesitation is, but I think it would be something that our town government should be advocating for, because it's real easy to do.
And I, I just want to underscore that it's, it's not that we don't have police trying to address this, we're just simply haven't got the manpower to be out there 24/7 babysitting speeds, yeah, any of them, yeah. So that would be to Bruce.
I'm just wondering if we should revisit the Mill Street bumps.
Well, before we get that, I, I guess my question is, I'm not sure I got it answered. Who is it? Is it Prince Tar? Is it?
Sure.
And Marie?
And Margaret?
So both of them, and Margaret, and.
But is there somebody else? I, I guess I don't understand the why it's illegal. Sometimes when a law is created, there's a particular reason for it, right? And I'm not sure that our representatives would be the ones to answer the why, is there somebody actually who works for the executive branch that could answer the why?
I'm sure that's been discussed quite a bit, I know they're in Rhode Island.
They're all over.
Because I've seen them, seen them there in various spots. But that's the only state.
Yeah.
I haven't seen them in New Jersey, I've not seen them in New York, I've not seen them in Pennsylvania.
You can get, definitely in Texas, and a lot of my colleagues.
Okay, I mean, they're in Illinois.
Okay. Um, perhaps the staff do.
We could try to do some homework on it.
Yes, could you? Because that, that's obviously a much wider question.
Did anybody email that via?
I sent something back to, to put in a letter saying that part of the problem certainly is, is the traffic that's come out because of School Street, and that we would revisit this in the fall. And that we would include looking at a pedestrian path. But that's take, that's land that belongs to somebody else, so no problem. Um, we have five minutes before the Can we, can we open the public hearing five minutes early? Okay.
Yeah, you really should, well, okay.
Let's, um.
You can read your memo.
Yes.
Do we have a briefing as on the board?
I can speak to Pax and Rex.
Yes.
Pine Street, Bill, on schedule. The side going down at the end of June. So they'll be up and running for the fall. Certainly completed all the site work.
Got a question about that.
Yes.
Not a hard one. What do we do about naming that fields?
It's an interesting, uh, interesting question. I don't know, it's not, it's never, I don't think it's ever discussed, other than it's.
I think we ought to think about that.
Drawn on feel.
Are you, are you suggesting a revenue-enhancing naming rates?
I guess that can be monetized if we want, but really, I, I don't know. I think it's something, I don't know how the other fields have been named, they're all named for significant.
Brook Street Field.
That was difficult, that's very creative.
Brook Street is.
But, but take it back to Parks and Rec about, and say, all right, let's come up with some ideas and.
Monitoring might not be a bad idea, really. Salsa.
There you go, yeah, there you go.
I was looking for salsa, Highland Field at Salsa. Will start small, and the only other item, well, the beaches. After that one big day, there hasn't been beach, there hasn't been weather. So they get that under control, there are discussions as to monitoring the circle and drop off. This discussion, especially on busy days. Kids are having some issues, and they're looking at ways of getting an old, maybe, uniformed police or some kind of authoritative-looking individual at the circle. And finally, pickleball. Uh, noise, there's still complaints from the same neighbors, a sound report was delivered to Oxon Wednesday, just prior to their meeting. And no one had a chance to review it, it's a lengthy document, and will be discussed at next month's meeting, and the interim, I know that Cheryl all of last week was there at eight o'clock every morning. And had swung by a couple of times to ask people to leave. Those are the Pax and Rex, I mean, the only worth as far as monitoring that, and you know, just to see if we can reiterate players, and that's, that's what's going on at Pax Mark.
Somebody have two-minute report?
Do you want to approve the minutes of May 8?
We could certainly do that.
I, I'm, I must abstain.
Is there a motion to accept the minutes of May 8?
I'll make that motion to accept the eighth minutes.
Any discussion? Brian?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
I vote yes, John?
Yes.
It's close enough. We get a motion to open a public hearing on the next move on the room. I need her. Open a public hearing in room five to deal with a request from National Grid to install quarter inch, one and a quarter?
No, one four-inch.
One four-inch PVC conduit encased in concrete from pole 23 to the property of 109 and 111 Pine Street.
So move second.
Yes.
Becky?
Um, yes.
Yes. Yeah, I say yes.
Yes.
Okay. Um.
Sabita Mahabir should be representing National Grid for 400 Street, Beverly, Massachusetts. This is to provide service for this particular property. Upgraded service.
Upgraded service. Um, we have a report from Charles Damp. Is there any discussion on?
This is Cindy. Cindy Conway at 110 Pine, is this an appropriate time for me to ask questions?
Yes.
Um, as I said, Cindy Conway at 110 Pine, I was just curious. So there was a previously a house at that location, I know they, it's been, you know, completely revamped, I don't have a lot of knowledge about electricity, but just curious, you know, why there's a, a different conduit going in, and what effect that may have on, on, I guess, the load for that hole, which I think must feed our house as well.
When they redesigned the house, they put the meter and the panel on the other side of the house, so the service coming off the existing pole will be removed, and the new service will be going in at the new location.
Is, is there a change to what that service being delivered is, though? I think that's one of the questions, if I'm not mistaken, Cindy.
Yes, thank you.
Not significant and not to the transformer at that location.
So it would have absolutely no impact on the other neighbors?
Should not have a problem with the other neighbors, not considering the load on that particular transformer.
Okay, Cindy.
And is that then, that's then going to underground, where I believe the rest of the houses are above ground?
That is what the customer had planned and put before, I believe, the planning board also.
Okay. Are there any plans to put the other homes underground?
Um, we would have to, they're paying for this to be done.
Okay. Okay, when you say that a significant change in service, what exactly does that mean?
It's no significant change for their service.
How about for ours?
The transformer load is not sufficient to cause a problem for your service.
Okay. Do you have any idea when this is going to happen?
They are not allowed to dig or get a permit to dig until this petition passes.
Okay. And about how long does that work take?
Um, it shouldn't take more than a day for them to do the work. National Grid's not doing the work their contractor is.
Okay. And would there be any interruption in service during that time?
Not for anyone else, no.
Okay, I, I assume we'll get notification if there's going to be work on, of when that's going to happen?
This was the notification.
Oh, so we don't get, we won't get notification of the actual top, day that it's going to take place?
Start date.
Start date?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Go on.
Are there any other questions? Okay, I look for motion to close the evidentiary portion.
Second.
Discussion, Brian?
Yes.
Brian, you went, no, there's no discussion. The question was, yes, shall we close the evidentiary?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Yes.
I vote yes, John vote yes, okay, thank you very much.
I make motion to approve the application of National Grid to install one four-inch PVC conduit encased in concrete from pole number 23 to the property of 109 and 111 Pine Street with the conditions stipulated by DPW Chuck Dam.
Second.
Discussion. Brian? How would you vote on this?
Yes.
Becky?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
I vote yes.
And I vote yes.
Now, I thank you again.
Thanks.
Nice to get at least some more wires underground.
Yes, wish that you'd get them all underground.
We got four more minutes.
Annual reappointments.
And we will reappoint.
On a motion to approve the annual.
And motion to approve the annual.
Some of.
Second.
Is there a discussion? What do you vote?
Yes.
Becky, yes.
Kathy, yes.
I vote yes.
And I vote yes.
Okay. So next year will be different.
One day, do you want a motion for the one-day alcohol license for Greater Cape and Chamber? Per submission move to approve the one-day alcohol license for Greater Cape and Chamber.
Second.
Is there a discussion? Meeting ready to vote, Brian?
Yes.
Becky?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
I vote yes.
Then I vote yes.
The squad tree pumper Philip sale.
Yes.
Um, is there a motion to approve the Philip sale as presented in our package?
Some move.
Second.
Discussion. Ready to vote. Brian?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Becky?
Yes.
I'll vote yes.
Yes.
Okay, we assume we need to sign that.
I can turn it out, but we do have the
Alcohol license?
Yes, yeah. And the National.
Okay.
Three pieces of paper.
Okay.
You also have the festival by the sea.
Yes, that was the chamber, that's chamber. Right.
Is there a motion to approve the festival by the sea?
Second.
It's no discussion. Is meeting ready to vote?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Becky?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
I vote yes.
John votes yes.
Excellent. I focus at 7:00. Then I suggest that we take up the request from the Beach Bumps for a delivery service.
Thank you for taking the time to be with us again, really appreciate it. We thought about everything that you guys have said about the traffic and everything, and we have the plans, all that, and first waiting on license now.
How are you solving the front? Kevin, Brian?
So we're just going to act as a normal car. So, we're just gonna act as a normal car, um, and then one of us is gonna be at the top of the circle. Um, ask people if they need rides, and we're gonna use walkie-talkies to communicate with each other. We're not gonna disobey any traffic laws. Pretty much gonna be another car on the road picking up and dropping people off. So there really shouldn't be an issue, traffic, for us.
Are you still planning to rent, um, umbrellas and beach shirts?
So that's like not our number one priority, like being allowed to do that, um, in the future, but right now we're more like focused on, um. The golf cart transportation.
Right. Um. I think we had. Uh, we would announce a little bit of this.
Yes. Yeah, so, um. Uh, the council does feel like this is something that you can permit.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, but it would qualify as a delivery service that allows you to say yes or no, um, because of our local ordinance.
Uh-huh.
The, uh, advice from council is that since you, you two gentlemen will not be actually owning the cart. That I guess one of the fathers is, is the owner, and so that we should have, um. The father's name on the license as well, and then the proof of, of insurance. Um. Uh, but beyond that, he felt that the state law does allow such a service.
Mm-hmm.
And it would be up to you as a local, as a matter of local decision-making, whether or not to, uh, approve it.
Is there discussion?
Becky, I have a question, um. There were a couple of things I'm reading here, and one is, you, you said. Car or cart? Are you still playing on the golf cart?
Golf cart, yes.
Okay.
But we're gonna act as a normal car.
Okay. And, um, neither of you has a junior operator's license, you have your full license.
Full license, yeah.
Okay. Um, thank you.
Of course.
Need other questions?
Uh, the only thing that came up, I think, from the discussion last time is there was a discussion of. Uh, trial Monday through Friday as opposed to the weekend. Have you guys got any comments or thoughts on that?
Um, we feel that we should be allowed to, on whatever, um, that it would probably be more beneficial for us. And for everyone else to run on weekends, just because Monday through Friday, people can park at the beach, so. We don't think there'd be as much foot traffic, um, through the weekdays. That's why we feel like that, uh, Friday, Saturday, Sunday would probably work better for, for us.
We would, we'd be open to a trial period though, just, just in the week.
I would like to ask you, I think Monday through Friday definitely, and I'm, I'm looking at a couple of weekends, and then we visit this.
I, I don't think we're testing anything if we just do it Monday.
I, I would agree with that.
If you want to try it, let's try it on the weekend.
Before the chase out Monday through Friday, and get ready for the weekend, but I'd like to maybe revisit this in a couple of weekends, I, I think it's a great idea.
Yeah.
I've heard nothing but, uh, positive response from people in town.
Mm-hmm.
And I think it's, uh, you got your plug, plug if you're, uh, ingenuity and give it a shot.
We have a meeting on, on the sixth of July.
Which is fourth of July, June.
After. Well, I mean.
That gives us two weekends.
Would you be willing to come back? Um, for July sixth meeting?
Yeah, we'd love to.
Great.
Yeah, I do have another question, will you be offering, um, anything else, I know in here also that will you be. Selling water, anything like that?
Um, as far as we know right now, we haven't. We don't think we're gonna, um, expand our business into that yet, uh, maybe next summer, you wouldn't be able to do that, but for now.
That opens up a whole different avenue of licensing, that's why I asked.
Yeah, another question, so this is a standard, it's a golf cart, right?
Yeah.
Are you gonna have some sort of a rack you're gonna put on the back or something, I mean, people, you're transporting people because they got stuff. Well, maybe they don't want to walk, but mostly they got stuff.
Yeah.
So, are you planning to do something like that? Yeah.
So the.
This, for, for. Identify yourself.
I'm Kevin Potter, um, Preston's father.
And you are at your address, point we're at, thank you.
Okay.
Um, so the, the golf cart is six-passenger, the two in the, in the rear. And they fall down to a flat.
Oh.
Surface, and you could bungee board or put stuff on there in the back, if they had to, so.
So you could swap out seats for, for, all right, then you'll, you'll make that up as you go along.
Yeah.
Okay. Good.
I just want to make sure that we have, I mean, this is, this is the provisional to see how it goes.
Mm.
Until July sixth, do we have any, um. Um. Proof of insurance at this point?
Uh, so I was, obviously, until we got approved and actually purchased the vehicle, I couldn't get an actual insurance policy, but. I have, uh, been in contact with my insurance company and agent, and it's, it's definitely, um, insurable and. Liability insurance and everything like that, so it's, you'd like insurance approved or.
We would need that for.
Sure.
After anything starts.
Sure.
But I. So. Would it be acceptable that they present. Those materials, the proof of insurance, and the, uh, application of the parents' father's name on it to the town clerk?
Uh, what would you do, yeah.
Who would choose the actual license that they need to carry?
So, so it'd be something that you all would sign.
Mm-hmm.
Um, once we, we have received.
Sure.
The requisite proof of insurance and, and signed application.
Okay, are there, are there other comments? Is there a motion to approve the, the application? Of the beach bombs to provide local service, that with conditions that.
I was gonna say, before we do that, um. I, I, is, is the motion being conditional upon successful?
Upon. Proof of insurance. A license application that includes, um, the owner of the vehicle. Um, and probably a condition that if the police find that they're interfering with traffic, if they will stand up.
I thought we were doing a provisional few weeks.
Prove, yeah, and, and we will review. And the, um. Working of the.
Yeah, question, uh, for, Mr. Potter, so how long will it actually take? For you to purchase the vehicle, it sounds like you don't have it yet, right, so you need our approval for something, right? So that he can then purchase the vehicle, it's, it's a sequence here on go over.
So, so you approve it condition on receipt of. The, the proof of insurance of the signed application.
Okay, so.
But you can grant approval tonight.
Okay, so then my question is, how long will it actually take you to get the vehicle? Because if we want to do a check after a trial period, I want to make sure you have enough time to actually buy the vehicle and get it here.
Sure, absolutely, so it. It depends on, you know, like, it's like a car, right, if, if they have it right there, I can go purchase it like that day. Um, or it could take a little bit longer if they had to ship it in or get it from somewhere, um. I, is it, when's the meeting after the?
July sixth.
I mean, I would love it if I could have till then, um, because it may be a good week or so. Obviously, I can't get insurance until I have the vehicle.
That, that's my point, is I don't want to box them into having a two-day trial.
Love it if they could have.
Exactly.
Realistically, it's probably gonna be a good week or so before it starts anyway, so that wouldn't be much time.
Run into the fire on fourth of July weekend, nice, yes.
Great, so. Looking for motion. To approve the application, conditioned on, um. The approved insurance. Mr. Potter's signature on the license. Um, and a review. On, on July seventeenth.
Seven.
Second.
Really discussion. Meeting ready to vote? Brian.
Yes.
Becky.
Yes, Kathy.
Yes, I say yes.
And I say yes.
Thank you.
I hope the sun shine.
And could I follow up with, is it Debbie?
Yes, if anyone wants to follow up, yeah.
Okay, yeah, all right, thank you.
Sidewalks and material discussion at seven twenty.
No. Water resource. Uh, sidewalks is at seven twenty.
Okay, I've got an old one then.
Yeah, you got an old one.
So that is for.
I see Nate Dershowitz is here.
So you, you've asked to, you know, do a comparison of asphalt versus concrete and granite. So we can both lay in check and walk through some of those comparisons, uh. You should have. Did you receive that, as well, you should have received the cost comparison of the two.
Let's just have what you had in your note.
Yeah, just.
There was a comparison of the school street. You know, as an example.
That was a, so I did not see something in the package, and I asked Chuck for some information. You were copied on that email, I think he just replied to me.
Right, I, I, I had attached it to the email, apparently didn't, to everybody, so I, I, I didn't do it to what I just said. Uh, an hour ago.
Oh, I'm sorry, there are other, no, I don't see anything else.
So, so, yeah, apparently you didn't get that, so made in check and walk through that cost comparison.
That, that's probably a good thing, because, um, not everyone. Who might be interested in this, gets those pieces of correspondence from, or in the, uh. Materials. So.
They weren't, they weren't, there was a supplement, but I had sent out my briefing memo, which. You know.
Just now.
Trying to, trying to imagine that somebody might want to come back to the. To this meeting at some point.
Yeah, that would be included in the package, yes.
Okay. So.
So, um. What would be helpful, would you like to have, like, a day to walk through, sort of an overview of, of the two?
Uh-huh.
So, Chuck and Nate, who, who has the short straw here?
I guess I'll start this one, because Nate's gonna be deep on the, uh, tux point.
Yeah, okay.
So, I guess, um, yes. Uh, where to start, so, uh, did everybody get the spreadsheet or no, is, I guess?
No, no.
Okay, so, you know, I, Kathy reached out with a couple of specific questions, but. I'll just answer kind of some of my general answers in. Um, you know, looking at, um, you know, kind of available information and industry standards. Uh, looking at concrete versus asphalt. The rule of thumb that, you know, I've always kind of gone with when kind of ballparking these things is. Concrete costs about double upfront, but it lasts about twice as long. So, there's not really a life cycle gain, it's more just, you know, um. It's more just along the lines of, you know, what are you, what are you looking to gain in aesthetic? And what is your maintenance schedule, things like that, so. Um, you know, certainly, when you have disruptions in the sidewalk, when you're starting new, there's the capital expense, and then. When we're maintaining them, you know, over the course of time, before we get back to that street, we also. You know, have to think about the ease of the repairs and what kind of repairs we're making. Um. So that, that's kind of generally where I started. Um, another kind of big element that we kind of have to live by. Is, in what you're seeing in the spreadsheet, when you get around to looking at it, is. You know, we, we bid this as a unit cost contract, so this, this applies right now, it's a multi-year contract with our. Paving contractor, which includes sidewalk work. And when we're, when we're doing that, we basically get a unit price item for, you know, everything under the sun. And one of those items is asphalt sidewalks, and one of those items is concrete sidewalks. And so what Nate and I put together was kind of a, you know. Applying it to school street and using kind of real word, world quantities. Um, you know, we're looking at essentially an upcharge to move to concrete. Of, you know, roughly five hundred thousand, a little bit more, so on a. Round numbers, one point two million dollar job, we're looking at one point seven million dollar job to upgrade the concrete, to concrete. Uh, another piece of that five hundred thousand is, you know, we don't have granite sidewalks existing. All the way up, um, school street, so we would have to also apply the new unit item for granite. As opposed to, in some areas on school street, we have the asphalt burn. Asphalt burn, much cheaper, obviously, than granite sidewalks, um, or granite curbing, um. You know, there, there's pluses and minuses to, uh, you know, beyond just the, you know, numbers in terms of capital expense. You know, obviously, asphalt is something that we do quite a bit, whether it's pothole repairs or. Uh, sidewalk repairs, you know, just spot repairs, I'll call it. When you get into concrete, you typically, you know, when, like, say National Grid was on a hearing earlier, if they were opening up a. Concrete sidewalk, they'd have to soft cut that concrete, they'd probably. Put back the, you know, put back their conduit, and then they'd put in, um, their asphalt. And then come back at some other time and pull the entire concrete panel and put that panel out, so it just. And we would have to go undergo that same kind of thing where we have, say, a tree root that upheaves a. Concrete panel and stuff like that, so it's just, it's a little bit more, uh, involved when you get to the kind of repairs. And, you know, of course, in town, we don't have concrete a lot, so we're not doing those pairs as much. Uh, but we are doing a lot of asphalt, we have, you know, several on-call contractors to do, you know, this asphalt maintenance. So that's kind of the starting point for concrete versus, uh, asphalt. Um, another thing that's more of an aesthetic, but. Right now, the, the old school granite that we see on school street, that's kind of about eight inches wide, it's really hard to get that. So you get what they call the new granite, which is usually six or seven inches wide, and so it doesn't really look the same, so when we go to do. The Pine Street sidewalk extension, we are planning to use granite, but that will be a. Different look than the granite on school street, so, you know, we're already mixing, matching asphalt, I suppose, with the granite, but. It's just another kind of thing. Um, so, I don't know, if there's any other questions specifically, I'll get it, I think another kind of point that. Kathy wanted to make, and, you know, I, I generally understand and agree with to a certain extent, is, you know, are we keeping up with? The maintenance, whether it's concrete or asphalt, and, you know, I guess, um, when we hear about the, kind of our standard operating procedure. Uh, in terms of maintenance is, you know, if, if somebody reports a problem, we go out and fix it. Um. You know, we, we could be more proactive, I suppose, in that. Um, but we do generally look at what projects we have upcoming, what's kind of in the pipeline. And so some things admittedly just sit, but, you know, we also don't have a budget that allows us to just go and. You know, do sidewalks for a month straight, which is what might be required if we wanted, you know, every sidewalk in town to have the same level of. Uh. Level of service, so, I don't know, is there any kind of other questions?
So, so let me clarify if I could, Chuck, uh, thank you, by the way, for all of the information that you did send, it was very much appreciated. Um, I just wanted to clarify one of the points that you made, um, and attributed to me, my, my main kind of pet peeve here. And I'm seeing it in the spreadsheet that everybody else will see, but I'm also seeing it in the rotunda presentation, we're gonna talk about in twenty minutes. We are only comparing investment installation cost, and that is not how. One typically would do a comparison of a capital endeavor. Okay, you've got to look at total cost of ownership, which should include maintaining the asset. So that it is safe and whatever, you know, um, I'm not seeing the. To your point, proactive maintenance. Built into these numbers, and based on what you're telling us. I presume that the asphalt would have to be maintained more frequently, because it doesn't last as long. And that's not figured into the analysis, and whenever you do a big capital investment, I'm just not accustomed to only looking at installation costs.
Well, I think the, the.
That's what, that's what I'm kind of trying to understand.
Yeah, but that, that's not true, so the, the, the numbers in that spreadsheet apply not only to, those are unit price items, so. Conceivably, if you were to. The numbers in that spreadsheet apply not only to, those are unit price items. So conceivably, if you were to do an extra. Hundred feet of sidewalk as a repair or maintenance, you can price that as asphalt or you can price that as concrete. And the unit price still applies. When I say that the time. Uh, you know, the life cycle of twenty years versus forty years, that does include. You know, because you're not saying that the concrete is going to break down in less spots. You're just saying when it breaks down at that one spot, because the tree is there. You have a certain quantity that you have to replace and that, and it generally follows the same principle of it costs twice as much to make that repair.
Right, but I guess what I'm trying to, what I would expect to see in a capital. Analysis is over a, and you pick a timeframe, whether it's five years or ten years, whatever makes the most sense for the asset you're talking about. And you say, here's the total cost of ownership. Um, you know, a million two for the investment and, you know, fifty thousand dollars, I'm making numbers up here, fifty thousand dollars a year to maintain it properly. So that it is safe and, you know, not crumbling. Um, that's to me total cost of ownership and you 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 price out those numbers over a. Chosen timeframe depending on the lifespan of the assets and you compare the two. And that gives you a better full sense as to what we should be investing. In the sidewalk. So I agree with Chuck. We're probably not investing enough so that your team can do more. But we're, I I think part of the reason for that is we may not be looking at the total cost of ownership and understanding what that means. And when we do, we pick, you know, Central Street and just say, hey, on Central Street, we want, you know, what's the total cost of moving to to. Um, cement sidewalks and granite for Central Street. Just pick one street and say, here's what it would cost, total cost. Over ten years or twenty years, whatever it is. And, you know, you look at your break even point. I mean, this is.
I I mean, I understand what you're saying, but I just, I I don't agree with that kind of in this instance. So.
Okay.
Um, the, the, I I get life cycle costs. That's, that's not my issue. My issue is. That you, that first of all, like you, you're saying, look at the five to ten years. We don't anticipate any. Maintenance costs in the first five to ten years because there's a moratorium on opening the street. And so that's not something I would expect to get back to. Oh, you know, things happen and emergencies happen and that might happen. So, but. I would still take the same unit and apply it to, okay, let's say ten percent of the sidewalk is going to fail over ten years. It's the same ten percent, whether it's asphalt or concrete, you're applying a different unit price. So the unit price is going to hold to roughly double. Now, I could, you know, give it. More thought and numbers, but that's just not the way I would program a street LCA. Like, that's just not, I think. Worth my time. So, um, you know, that being said, I think that there is an element of, should we look at the. Total assets we have in town and their numbers. I I did send you the um, the look at the. Uh, you know, our inventory, I guess, of sidewalks and and roadway as well. And I could, you know, we could kind of take a better look at the amount of backlog. And, you know, like you said in your email, we have, say, you know, ninety percent, this is this true in the water main system too, but. You know, if if ninety percent of our assets are over ten years old, then we should expect that. You know, we have more maintenance to do and therefore that number should change. But that's different, I think, than applying the numbers to school street. You know, on year zero, that's just, I don't think worth our time.
And, um, to Chuck, Chuck, I I guess when I. Bring up sidewalks and and McCattam. Um. My thought is less, you know. What you all are or are not doing, it's more what does a townspeople want? And what are they willing to pay for what they want? Because if if the town wants. Uh, concrete and granite curbing, then and and they have the information of what the costs are. Not just the immediate cost of installation, procurement and installation, but as Kathy said. Um, ma- maintenance. Um, and therefore. It's not. I'm not saying what we have. Is what it is because of the DPW. I I'm just saying that if we, if we wish to modify it. We need to ask the townspeople.
We don't know what to ask them.
And I don't, I don't. Yeah, I don't, I don't mean to sound like, you know, I'm defending, you know, every sidewalk in town. I I'm just kind of looking at our general approach over the last five years. And, you know, we've certainly made progress in some. Streets for various reasons and others not as much. And another, you know, another thing that we, you know, have to try and take into account. Is, you know, upcoming work, previous work, work that's in progress. And so, you know, is it worth the, if even if our numbers say. You know, we we should be investing so much in this and, you know, are we looking for a project for the sake of finding a project or are we.
Right.
Waiting, waiting, you know, to year three, when, you know, maybe it needs it in year two. Like that, that's just something that I have to deal with on a, you know, annual basis. So.
Right. Well, one of my questions that I I had regarding asphalt versus granite. The curbing is, when I look at the curbs on school street, they're angled, whereas a granite curb. You hit a granite curb and you know it, you're going to stop. Whereas the 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 asphalt curbing on school appears to be at an angle.
Yep.
Is that?
It's more forgiving too.
It's a lot more forgiving if you hit it with Brian Tire, for example.
Yeah, so I mean, this is a a thing that, you know, we were just trying to match what was existing. Um, you know, we get it both ways because, you know, some, some people will call and say, you know. I want the aesthetic of the granite. It looks nicer. It's rugged. But then, you know, the second there landscaper has to park to do their, to do their lawn and they can't pull up on the sidewalk, they get upset. So. And, you know, that's not, it's case by case, you know?
Um, I've just got one question to to Kathy's point. Chuck, is there a significant difference in for. An- uh, annual maintenance between asphalt and concrete? Or is it the same cost?
Yeah, so I guess that. Right, right now, we don't have a lot of concrete out there, so I wouldn't be looking for. An increase in budget to do the corresponding work on concrete. You know, we would be repairing asphalt with more asphalt. So if we need to, you know, make that money go further. You know, we we would need to add money to that budget. Um, I, so I guess, you know, the, there's only really. Concrete downtown. We we have replaced a couple panels downtown. Um, you know, and it's not. Cheap because you basically have to order a full truck of concrete, but it's not inordinate amount of money. Um, so, you know, I I don't know, I don't know, right, what, what kind of answer you want me to give? It's. It's case by case, right? Like, I'm not sure.
I've, I've got a question, Chuck. Um, they had one more variable. What about granite curbs and asphalt sidewalks? Which is what is a, is a good chunk of sidewalks here that are, that are structured that way?
Yeah.
And I don't see that necessarily, obviously with the, with the, with a granite curb and a granite and and the cement sidewalk, it's a lot of money. Difference, difference wise.
Yep.
What's the difference if it were granite curbs and asphalt sidewalks?
So I'm, I'm looking for the number right in, right now, but it's basically, I think, six bucks a foot for the asphalt. And I want to say seventy-five bucks a foot for the installed granite, but. I I mean, that's, that's the type of number. So, you know, it's a factor of ten.
And follow that.
So we did all of the, we did all the asphalt curbing for about twenty-four thousand dollars. If we had switched that to granite curbing. It would have been about three hundred thousand dollars.
Okay, and and in 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 that instance, you weren't considering the sidewalks at all?
No, that's correct. That's just the curbing.
Okay, it's just the curbing. The curbing is ten times more expensive. And I don't know, what is the expense differential for the sidewalks? Just the sidewalks alone?
Uh, the hot mix was, call it two hundred and twenty thousand and the uh, cement sidewalks would be. Uh, four hundred and ninety-four thousand.
All right, so that's.
Okay.
No doubt.
It's about double. It's like, curbs is where the money is.
Yep.
Curbs is where the money is.
So that's a really good point, John, because there are places on Central Street where you have the granite. Curbing, but you have the asphalt and it deteriorates very quickly.
Okay, well.
And and so that's, that's, you know, it's a good point.
So in that instance, downtown, I would think that's, that's cement because it's not that much more expensive is a more serious consideration. When you start to get outside of the downtown area, I know that that becomes impractical.
Yeah.
But the granite curbs do. I'm not saying going way out of town, but they're, they certainly look nicer than the asphalt curves.
Yeah, and so the.
Thing that I think that that, you know, that we need to ask people, because I've had quite a few people say to me. See a black, see a black McCattam and.
I I I think what what we're saying is, what I would like to see personally is, I would like to understand what it would take. Because to John's point, a lot of the downtown already has the granite curb. What would it take to replace the asphalt sidewalk with cement? Oh, from a budget.
I think this is a case that the downtown improvement committee.
Yeah.
Well, they already there and that's part of their plan. Yeah, yeah.
So.
And so what I'm requesting is a cost. What what would that take?
But I think. We don't want to go in advance of the, of the downtown program. And that actually is part of, they've got another phase.
Right, they've got another phase two.
Well, but you know, in in round figures, that target would be double the cost of the asphalt and it should last twice as long.
Right.
I mean, so they they did price it out that way. You guys got the presentation a couple weeks ago. You know, these treatments where and, you know, so on and so forth, but they they do have a conceptual level cost for, you know, that entire work. And one of the elements of that. Cost is the sidewalks going, and they're only pricing it as concrete. Um, you know, when we go to bid it, we can, you know, apply unit prices or we can bid it, you know, A versus B, but. I guess I'm, I'm with you. Like, we'll do concrete downtown if that's the aesthetic that people want. Like, it's not a problem.
I think I just, I'm feeling, the the only thing that troubles me about your statement, Chuck, is the word aesthetic. I understand that that may be why it it gets our attention. I'm talking about safety. Okay, on Central Street, the sidewalks are tripping hazards. And so I I do believe that following the downtown improvement. Um, committee's plan. With some, you know, following up on that with some timeframes, I guess maybe that's what I'm looking for. What would it, when I say what would it take? What would it take in terms of timing and what would we have to present in front of what town meeting? Because obviously the culvert work is going to start at some point. So what is that, what does that plan look like? Um, because I don't view this as an aesthetic issue solely. I I do believe some of the sidewalks are not safe.
But I, I guess I'm just saying, when I say aesthetic, I just mean that I'm, I'm saying that we're. The the end goal that their reason they're looking for concrete is the aesthetic. Now, if you want to, like, we can go out and pave it tomorrow for half the price and make it safe. But if we want to wait and not spend that money only to spend double the price three years from now or whatever that timeframe is, then. You know, that's fine, but I wouldn't, I I wouldn't go out tomorrow and just do concrete sidewalks. Like, that's, that's spending a lot of money when you're already planning on spending a lot of money. Um.
If I may just briefly, um. If there are sidewalks that are unsafe at asphalt.
Yeah.
Can they be repaired with spot repairs to make them safe?
Yeah. Absolutely. And so like, like this is the other part of my email to Kathy was, you know, we. We we can certainly go out and do more maintenance. I'm not, I'm not crying poor on that. Like, we have the budget. It's just, it's always a, you know, juggling act of, is it? Is it necessary in the short term when we have a medium-term project coming behind it for whatever reason? Like, so, you know, last year, we did Captain Dusty, you know, we did from the the railroad tracks down to Captain Dusty's in asphalt. Because it was a safety hazard that needed to be addressed. We can do that again for Central Street. It just hasn't been part of the programming because. You know, frankly, I I didn't know, I didn't think that it was unwalkable, um, you know, and we shouldn't. Don't get me wrong, we don't have to wait until things are unwalkable before we fix them, but. There's a lot of roads out there and there's a lot of sidewalks that people want us to fix. So like, I, we have to draw the line somewhere, like, that's. That's part of the, you know, making sure we make budgets and, you know, do things in a thoughtful progression. So, you know, I'm happy to take a look at it and if it needs to be done, we can do it ahead of concrete, but we will do it in asphalt and it will be safe.
One more. Point. Many years ago, I was told that when you resurfaced a road, you also resurfaced. The sidewalks. This is long before your time. Is is that in fact the program when, when a road is being resurfaced? Grounded and repaved that you look at the sidewalks at the same time?
Uh, yeah, we we definitely look at it. I mean, like I said, some, some of our projects are are more. Projects of opportunity. Some are projects of, you know, like in school street, you know, we did the full. You know, we, five years ago, we did the drainage, we've done sewer work and we just did the water work and, you know, now we do. The full width roadway work, which includes the sidewalk. Um, you know, we did the same on Forest Street. Uh, we did the same on Ocean Street. Less the parts in front of the beaches that get hit every, you know, winter. So. You know, there's, there's a lot that goes into it, um, but we're, yeah, we, we certainly look at the whole road.
Does, does an asphalt sidewalk last about the same amount of time as an asphalt road?
Um, not necessarily. Um, you don't. Hope to get longer. I mean, there, there's a lot more that's happening on the roadway. Um, there's a lot more utilities that can fail. There's a lot more people that need to get into the roadway and, you know, those are the points of failure. So whenever we do a road, you know, like school street, for instance, you know. I will not approve a permit to dig up school street for the next seven years. So there'll be a seven-year moratorium. That's why I I don't think there's really a a maintenance cost that we would plan on in the next seven years. Now, could. You know, National Grid come back to us next week and say we have an emergency situation on the gas main and we have to get into it? Yes. But we will make them pave the entire width, curb to curb or or more. So like, that's how we mitigate against. You know, those kind of issues. Um. I think that was the answer to the question, but let me know.
Sorry. I think this is primarily an informational session and we've learned a lot about asphalt and.
Yeah, I mean, so, yeah, it, you know, it's a lot. There's a lot to, a a lot that we consider at given times based on where we are in the life cycle, for sure.
Okay.
Okay, can we move on? Thank you, Nate.
Thanks.
And, you know, certainly, you know, I'm relying on you guys, you know, Lower Pine, Central, whatever, um. You know, if if there's issues that are safety issues, you know, we we will go out and address them. So don't be shy about letting us know about those things, for sure.
Personally speaking, my thought was less, it was partly the safety, but more that. If if the town wants a different look, they need to. Up the budget to the DPW and the support of that to the DPW. I certainly don't want to be. Making it seem as if anybody's not doing their job. It's more if this is what we want. Then the town needs to. Say so. Mm-hmm. Can we move on to the next point, facility base? Uh, what facility? Here it is. I think we all got. The, the, the handout. Nate, do you want?
Yep.
Hi, everyone. Uh, so tonight, we're here to present the alternatives analysis that we've done for the Tux Point Phase Two uh, Rotunda Analysis. Um, with us tonight, we have Christine Player and Benjamin Foley uh, with Foth uh, Infrastructure. Um, I think you guys should be familiar with both as they've done uh, much of our harbor work over the last few years. Um, so with that, I'll leave it to Christine. Um, Greg, if you could give Christine uh. Uh, control so she can share her screen, she can put up the presentation.
Yep, just, just give it to her.
See, I'm, I'm going to ask you to give control to Ben because he'll be presenting, but I'm happy to uh, introduce myself as the um. The client team leader for the Tux Point project. Um, Nate, thanks for kind of the background. We've been heavily involved. Been heavily involved in a lot of waterfront development with the town for many years now. Formerly CLE Engineering, um, over the last five years, we've been both infrastructure. So, um, we have completed Phase One, as I'm sure everybody here. Uh, is aware of, and that was getting the floating dock, new gangway, extended gangway. Pile-supported, um, system in place that was completed last May successfully. And, you know, when all this started, it was really mitigated by. The age of the pier, um, and it's it's old, it needs to be replaced. Um, and because of the cost, because of permitting challenges and things like that, we're we're taking this project as a phased approach. So we can check the box that we've successfully implemented Phase One. Um, and here we are to transition into Phase Two, which is really focusing on the pier structure. Um, which supports the historic rotunda. Um, and I'm going to turn it over to Ben. Our our goal here is to really just. Give you guys a a general overview. We've spent a lot of time, um, looking at concept conceptual options. Um, that the repl- replacement pier may consist of. And those options were initially defined in us collaborating with Nate and the the recreational parks folks. Um, in terms of kind of scope of the different types of, um, options we should consider. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to my project engineer Ben Foley, uh, to present, um, give you a hopefully a short presentation. And a little bit of time for questions at the end, um, of the conceptual alternatives that we we have come up with.
Uh, hi, everybody. Uh, I do not have access to share my screen though. That is the only thing that I'm.
We can, I can pinch it if I have back there.
Yeah, I mean, if you have it, uh.
We gave you co-host ability.
Greg, you're really getting into this, uh, mastermind control.
Oh, here we go. There we are. To, okay, can everybody see that? Uh, does that go? Screen two. Oh, sorry about that. Technical difficulties. Uh, uh, okay. As Christine introduced, uh, kind of gave. My first couple of slides. Uh, so. We're here to present the the Tux Point Phase Two. Uh, pure placement and rotunda preservation, the conceptual alternatives that that we've come up with. Uh, again, with with the town. So just kind of. Give you a. Your bearings of the site. Uh. I'm sure everybody is familiar with the Tux Point Pier and Rotunda. Uh, so this project is. Phase one was was focusing on on the floats and replacing the gangway system. Uh, now Phase Two is is something with the the rotunda and, uh, the pier out there. So, all right, so kind of what like what's bringing us here today? Uh, so. In twenty twenty, both performed a conditional assessment, uh, just to. Determine and can performed a conditional assessment that determine the service life of the structure. Was between one and five years and we recommended periodic inspections. Uh, which we've been performing and and gave the town some, uh, repair. Uh, some repairs to extend that service life, just the minimal repairs to get us through to. To be able to develop these alternatives and and presented, get through permitting and and all of that. Uh, so along with aging infrastructure, there's also changing environment. Uh. Uh, currently, the. Here is experiencing some overtopping, uh, with those extreme high tides that we get, uh, a couple of times a year. Uh, and we also, as part of this project, we looked at the future replacement. Um, and having to require that an elevation increase to address that overtopping. Along with, uh, projected FEMA flood elevations and, uh, sea level rise for that one hundred year, uh, storm event. I was just zoomed in of that last one. So this is like the the entire scope of our of our proposed, uh, alternative, the the existing. Structure that's out there. So we have the the solid fill wharf, it's about a sixty foot structure. In length that ties into the existing timber pier, uh, that's about a ninety foot structure. Uh, they both sit out right around elevation fourteen mean low water. So here's another, uh, the section of what's out there. I'm like, again, everybody I'm sure is familiar. So you have that solid fill section with a pile-supported structure, uh, including the the timber. Piles, stringers, handrails, pier, uh, and then that ties into the rotunda, which is also all timber. Uh, so as we move forward through developing our proposed alternatives, we had to. Decide on some design considerations and criteria. Uh, as we saw in Phase One, we we have to go with that steel rock socketed piles. Because of that high bedrock and the weak overburden soil. Uh, we also needed, we we decided that, uh, keeping the pier ADA compliant was. We we decided that we had to keep it ADA compliant. Along with that, we also determined that a pure deck elevation of nineteen mean low water, uh. Would be suitable, uh, for that. The flooding and future sea level rise that, um. Are tied together with the the FEMA projections and the NOAA projections. Uh, and as part of that Phase One effort, uh. We're tying into that fit, yeah, we're tying into that Phase One effort and, uh, the existing backland. And we also have to maintain that the rotunda and the historic aesthetics at the site. But just a continuation of that last slide. Uh, so these are the other rock socketed piles that are already there, so. These will, uh, be used in this Phase Two, uh, elevation, uh, raising elevation of. Of the pier that's out there. Um, again, uh, the gangway connection, uh, as part of that Phase One effort. Being able, this is a modifiable, so there there will raise the elevation of the pier. Uh, as part of this proposed, uh, raise the elevation of the gangway tie-in as part of these proposed alternatives. That was just a consideration thought of in that Phase One approach because we knew this Phase Two approach, I mean, this Phase Two. Work was being performed. Um, along with that, we we kind of had to draw a line in the sand as we started developing out these alternatives. We realized that that backland. Uh, the the more we developed out the alternatives, the more we were adding more and more and we just needed to draw a line in the sand. So. All of our our scope is limited to the existing footprint of the solid fill pier. And then the timber pier itself. So that that's kind of where we stopped our project and said. If we want to do more, we can, but as of right now, we're just going to stop right here. Uh, so as part of. Along with that proposed alternatives, there are the consideration of the material we're going to replace the structure with. Uh, so as I said earlier, the rock socketed piles will be required to resist. Lateral and uplift design forces. Uh, so the pure structure is going to sit on those rock socketed piles and then everything up from there, we went. Uh, we analyzed the steel alternative and a timber alternative for. And the differences, uh, material properties, the. Longevity of the structure. Maintenance and costs. And as you can see, uh, steel for us looks like a. Uh, preferred alternative, uh. That materials allow it to span longer, so we'll have less piles. The material itself lasts longer, uh, so the service life is significantly longer. And because of that, the maintenance is less frequent and because of that span, less piles are required. Which lower the capital costs and the longevity lowers the maintenance cost. So now the the fun part, so the proposed alternatives that we, uh, designed. Uh, we have four main alternatives. Uh, the first alternative is is maintaining that existing footprint. Of where the solid fill pier is, the timber pier, and just raising, getting it up from that backland area to elevation nineteen. As on that ADA slope, that five percent. Up to elevation nineteen and keeping it all in the same footprint. Uh, Alternative Two has a similar approach, uh, except it extended an additional thirty eight feet up to that elevation nineteen mean lower water. And then Alternative Three, uh. We maintain the pier because of the work that was done in Phase One, but we relocate the rotunda. Up out of the water and onto the land. Uh, and then Alternative Four, uh, this was something that we worked together. Uh, with the town and decided that. Maybe we don't want to go up, raise from that elevation fourteen to elevation nineteen, so we'll take like a phased approach. Uh, so we decided raising the timber structure to elevation seventeen as quickly as possible. On that five percent slope and then as a Phase Two, given twenty five or thirty years when that. When we decide that the pier should be raised, we'll raise that. Uh, solid fill section and the timber section, I mean, the pier section. To elevation nineteen and to match that Alternative One. Footprint. Uh, so like I said earlier, both timber and steel framing were evaluated and all of the steel alternatives. Will have a timber facade, uh, sort of look exactly like the timber structure on top that's already out there. So, uh, uh, this is Alternative One, it's the the exact same footprint. So from the aerial, it'll look the same, but, uh, the the sections are are kind of where you see the difference. So, uh, just as a note here, uh, earlier I was talking about the difference between timber and steel. The the timber alternative has significantly more piles and I think that side by the side by side section. Really shows the difference between, uh, the the timber alternative and and the steel alternative and that comes down to the span of. Uh, each material. Uh, so. Um, yeah, I guess I'll get into each one. Uh, for Alternative One, we have that, uh, solid fill. Uh, ramp that ties into the backland and works its way up three and a half feet. That'll have like, uh, the same stone facade on either side, um, and then tie into. The timber, uh, well. Now timber, future steel. Pile-supported. Here, uh, up to that elevation nineteen and have roughly a fifty five foot. Here that is at that elevation nineteen, so the the slope is that five percent ADA. Uh, and we've reached that elevation nineteen as quickly as we can, uh, to. Uh, extend the service life and deal with the the FEMA flood elevations and and sea level rise. Uh, that is Alternative One. Uh, then Alternative Two, there's a difference here with the extension. Uh, the solid fill pier will remain in the same footprint, um, similar to Alternative One, but. The the pier section will be extended that thirty eight feet. Here, here we go. Uh, same noticeable pile number, pile count here too. Um, just more even more exaggerated with the the extension of the pier. Um, so this is the exact same approach way. Uh, it's about a hundred foot slope, five percent slope. Up to elevation nineteen, but instead of that fifty five foot. Length, we have an additional forty feet, uh, extended, uh, at the end here, so. Similar, but just extended a bit further. And then Alternative Three, this is, uh, the alternative where we're. Raising the pier, uh, we're we're actually proposing a, uh, framed. Uh, observant deck, you can, we can put like. Um, seating out there or maybe put a, um, a cover on it, so it has a similar aesthetic to the rotunda of a. Uh, the rotunda has been moved out of the water and and onto land, so it'll sit on. A concrete foundation with a pathway sloped up, brading on either side just to tie into the existing. Grassland that's already at the site. Keep doing that. Uh, and this is again similar, they're all relatively similar to that that Alternative One where we have the the one hundred foot. Ramp up at, um. A one on twenty. The solid fill gets raised up about from zero to three and a half feet. And we then tie in to the rest of the pier, uh, at elevation nineteen. So you have a a thirty three foot platform, a bit longer with the steel because of that span length. Uh, so thirty seven foot platform, uh, but still very similar to that, that Alternative One. And then Alternative Four, we're showing that phased approach, so the footprint will be the same as. Alternative One, uh, except we'll be raising at different elevation, so. I think the sections kind of show it a bit better. So if if the, um. Going from elevation. Fourteen to elevation nineteen seems too dramatic, we can go with this alternative that brings us from elevation fourteen. To elevation seventeen, uh, which allows for us to. Deal with the the overtopping and and the flooding that we're seeing now. Uh, while slowly increasing the elevation of of the pier instead of doing one massive overhaul, uh. And then as as time goes on, uh, we projected a twenty five year, uh, increase. An increase of two feet in like around twenty five years, um. Matching that phase, uh, the Alternative One where we have a solid fill. Ramp on top of the existing solid fill, um, that ties into the pier and then the pier slopes up. All at ADA, that a hundred foot ramp then ties into, uh, the pier and the rotunda. And, uh, we also, I also want to note that the gangway for all these alternatives has been. Uh, the Phase One gangway is tied into to all of these alternatives. Uh, so here's a little summary of the design alternatives. Uh, as you can see, the big difference here is it's kind of the the cost. So like I said earlier, both, all of the alternatives were broken out between steel framing and timber framing. They'll all be on those steel piles, the rock socketed steel piles like we saw in, like, what is out there now for Phase One. Uh, we're looking at Alternative One, which is the same in the existing footprint. Two point two five for. Steel and alternative, I'll just go through the steel, they're they're all lower than the timber, but. We decided to go with a timber, we have all those options as well. Uh, Alternative One is two point two five with a thirty foot, uh, forty foot extension, looking at around two point five. Million, uh, Alternative Three is moving that, the rotunda upland, this is the cheapest alternative. Most cost-effective alternative at one point seven five million. And Alternative Four, we had to break out, uh. And show that Phase One being around two point one six million. Uh, and then when we want to go back and escalate, the. Raise the pier up to elevation nineteen, um, all staying within the same footprint. Uh, we escalated the, um. Costs twenty five years out, uh, for that. Two and a half foot raise, but with mobilization and and all the construction materials and included with inflation as well. Uh, that alternative. For Phase Two will be around three and a half million to get somebody out there to do the work again and, um. And raise the pier up. And this is where I hand it off to you, Christine, to go over. Potential funding.
Yeah, I I think it's important, um, just to briefly, uh, present this overview of grant funding opportunities that, um. Are highly likely to be in support of the next phase of this project. And I think many of you are familiar with the Mass Seaport Economic Council. And the opportunities that they afford for waterfront infrastructure projects. Phase One was funded. And for the dock system through the Seaport Advisory Council and. I believe they provided in buy-on, correct me if I'm wrong, I around eight hundred thousand dollars towards Phase One, is that correct? Not to put you on the spot, is he still there?
Yeah, hi Christine, it was eight, eight hundred and eleven million dollars that, uh, we got from the state. Super Economic Council.
Yep, so they've invested in Phase One and they're also providing eighty percent of the costs. Towards Phase Two Engineering Permitting and Design. So right now, um, the Seaport Economic Council is heavily invested. Um, and in in this project, Phase One, Phase Two, and, um. There is a high likelihood, uh, traditionally, the the council continues to invest in projects. That move forward in a phased approach like this, um, so that opportunity is there, um, to assist the town with funding. Um, the construction phase up to a million dollars and the town would be required to provide a twenty percent match. Um, the funding request cycle with that program typically, um, is twice a year, uh, in May and November. So that opportunity exists and certainly, um, should be on the table to to consider moving forward into a construction phase for. So that opportunity exists and certainly um should be on the table to to consider moving forward into a construction phase for phase two. Secondly, um through the Office of Coastal Zone Management, um there are annual resiliency grants that are issued. Um, they provide up to two million dollars in funding assistant with a twenty-five percent town match. That is an optional match, um but it is highly recommended to to be competitive with your ask. Um, and this program targets of projects very uh similar to the project that we're looking at here in Tux and that. It is all about supporting infrastructure. Um, replacement reconstruction efforts that are focused on addressing long-term. Resiliency and sustainability, and that's exactly what all of these alternatives ultimately are being designed to achieve over the long term. So again, the scope of this project fits very nicely with the um. The scope that the resiliency grant po- program does support funding and that request is an annual request typically, um. The opportunities come out in May, actually, we're in one right now, um and uh proposals are. Accepted, I think until early July, so it's right around this time um that those applications would be filed. Um, and that's a once a year opportunity, and I do believe that both programs could concurrently fund this project to further help. Uh defer town costs and town investment, um moving this project forward and without getting into heavy math. Because we've got several alternatives on the table here and not really a final decision on which way we're going. Um, we decided it would be important to to share with uh you folks tonight, um that there are very strong. Uh, potential opportunities out there for state provided, you know, they have funding available. To support a project just like Tux, it's a highly favorable type of project that both of these programs um are are uh. Like to to fund and have traditionally funded, as I mentioned, uh with the investments that they've made to date on Tux Point. And not to also be remiss, but they're funding Moorestown Pier work. Uh, Seaport Council is and recently by on, we got funds to support Reed Park work, so. Uh, Seaport is heavily investing in the town of Manchester's waterfront development for sure. And I think Ben, is that the last sign?
Yeah. Uh, that brings us to questions. Uh, from all of you.
Questions.
John, yes.
Yeah, a couple of, couple of questions and thank you, Ben and Christine, uh graphics are are very good and very, very helpful and the numbers are even more so. Um. You're you're, we're going up to a mean low water of nineteen feet, correct? And one of these scenarios is seventeen feet. Uh, for the pier, what is it right now?
Uh, right, right around fourteen uh mean low water.
So we're going up five feet.
Yeah.
Okay, um. Is there any benefit to moving that rotunda out? The costs were very, very similar, essentially you're adding one thirty-eight feet of uh pier. Um, is there any advantage in doing so? Because the cost differential is not significant.
Well, I I'll take a stab at that, so we looked at this alternative and I do want to just. Qualify that our cost estimates are very rough order of magnitude, um this is conceptual alternative level. Um, really just to get perspective and and general order of magnitudes of costs. Uh, the town had requested that we look at an alternative like this with the possibility of. Perhaps saving a little bit more money than our cost estimates show now, um because it's so early phase, but the idea would be. To extend the pier further seaward to allow for, in very simple terms, to. Pick up the rotunda and put it on the extended platform as opposed to have to temporarily. Relocate that structure, it it really was the thought process of moving that rotunda. Fairly simply by constructing the new platform and then just moving it seaward and then continuing on with the construction of the pier. So we do need to invest a little bit more deeply, should this be um an alternative that the town is interested in pursuing. Um, as a preferred alternative to see just what types of cost savings would be associated with this element. Um, and certainly, you know, extending it, it 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 does give more level peer access. Um, out here, it also will allow for, and we're not showing it here because we're really um squished into fitting cross-sections on these slides. Um, but big picture wise, I I don't know if you folks recall off the top of your head, and Ben, I don't know if we have a slide that we can quickly show. Is um when we were doing phase one of the project, um. There, there was discussion and consideration of those floats extending in front of the rotunda, so. Really, there's a little bit more potential to this project, um that I think this alternative would lend itself well to and. And I see you ready to chime in, so I I I'm happy to hear your comments on this.
Well, you you pretty much covered it, uh. It, when it was first proposed, this idea to me, uh immediately I thought, well, if if. If you could save by not uh having to store the rotunda somewhere else, that's good, um. And it accomplishes more of what the rotunda was built for in the first place, to get, get a view out the harbor, um. So uh it benefits the the town from a.
It's also historically more correct.
Yes, correct. Yep. So that's, that's really, yeah, you 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 got it, Christine.
Okay.
Okay. Actually, with with this option of alternative. Two, um, just seems to expose it a little bit more, but but how close does that come to to the channel? Going out thirty-eight feet.
I mean, do you have, you can go, can you go back to the slide that shows the um? The floats as well, I think we re-show the offset, oops. Yeah.
Fifty-one feet.
Yeah. And I believe, and by incorrect me if I'm wrong, that that float extension, I believe we had a twenty-five foot offset from. Offset from the channel, um.
Yes.
Yep, and that's something that we've carried into the uh phase one floats that are out there now, there's a twenty-five foot offset, so that would just continue to be maintained, so. There really isn't any true encroachment into the channel because the floats are that limiting buffer. Um, to to vessel uh encroachment and near the channel.
Correct.
Thank you.
Well, you've got a question.
Okay.
Yes. Do the board first.
Um. Um, if we were to apply for and or receive any of the proposed grants. Would that reduce the likelihood that we could? Um. Obtain similar grants for other sea, um sea level rise projects we may have to pursue?
So obviously I can't speak on behalf of those that decide what projects get funded, but. I think it really comes down to, you know, managing your projects, um I think. What we see right now is Seaport is funding several projects in the harbor concurrently. We've got this project, we've got Morse Town Pier and we've got Reed, Reed Park is about to start up, so. I think you can see there that um the investment is being made and they're concurrently um. Concurrently happening projects, um I think that both of these opportunities. As well as many uh state funding opportunities that we're seeing to support these kind of projects. Are are very much inclined to support projects that are addressing long-term sustainability and um resiliency along our waterfront. That is something that um we are being charged with more than ever as waterfront engineers, um. And these programs are um very much focused on finding those types of projects. Uh, to really profile and and show um more from a transferability to other communities that, yes, you you can. Move forward with improvements along your waterfront and you can solve these long-term sustainability and with resiliency. Issues that we are all heavily engaged in trying to find solutions for. Understanding that, you know, the sea level rise and and climate change that we are are seeing. Uh, they're based on, you know, predictions and um. You know, practical approaches, we we've been seeing a lot of these projects um throughout the state. Where the infrastructure is so old that you just can't repair it anymore, so we're seeing more and more throughout the state of Massachusetts. That there is opportunity for. These state programs to really make a difference in local communities to. Really replace the infrastructure because it's no longer sustainable because it's old, but. Replace the in- infrastructure with mindful and thoughtful approaches. That will achieve these long-term sustainability and resiliency needs um to make sure that the investment. Um, is getting all of these communities where they need to be over the long term, understanding the challenges along the waterfront. Meaning that sea level rise isn't something that happens tomorrow, but it's something that is ever changing over time. And we're working uh very diligently to find creative situations um. In our our engineering projects right now to allow communities to move forward in a. A practical approach, an affordable approach um to achieve these long-term resiliency needs along the waterfront.
John.
Yeah, final question from me, the nineteen feet that you're going, going up five feet, is that, is that your number or a number from IPCC? Or a number from uh the Army Corps of Engineer, where'd that number come from?
So Ben, if you can go back to the existing section, I think it's easier to explain, hopefully in very quick fashion, um. There you go, whoop. So right now, the pier deck elevation is at approximately fourteen and you can see that FEMA flood elevation is at sixteen, sixteen point eight. As far as FEMA flood elevations go, um it's preferable that we raise the deck elevation a minimum of two feet. Above that elevation, that's where we kind of start with that nineteen, right? We go from sixteen point eight plus two brings you to nineteen. Concurrent to the flood zone, uh two feet above uh base flood elevation, meaning the deck. There's the sea level projections, which we are utilizing um the intermediate scenarios that NOAA has recently republished. Um, based on Boston Harbor data. And over the lifespan of the new infrastructure. Um, which at a minimum would take us out fifty years, so say twenty seventy, but because if if the town does choose. And we recommend strongly to move forward with a steel framed structure because of its longevity and that could actually last longer than fifty years. Um, by the true duration and sustainability of the steel structure alternative. Um, the sea level rise projections could have you up to five feet. Increase um over that duration of almost up to a hundred five years, so we add that five feet to fourteen and we get back at nineteen, so. We're, we're, we're looking at both FEMA flood elevation uh practices. And then we're looking also at the sea level rise projection over time based on NOAA NOAA published data.
Chuck, help us.
Please unmute yourself and.
Go ahead, Chuck.
Oh, okay, thank you, sorry. Um, I I had some comments on some of the different, different options, is this the time to be doing that?
Before you start, please identify yourself and.
Sorry, Chuck Houghton, uh Oxpassa Road. In in town here, um I have some comments on some of the different options, is is that, this is the time to do that right now?
Please try and be brief, but yes.
Sure. So, so my family spends a lot of time at Tux Point, so we. They have kind of strong opinions on on how to uh keep Tux, Tux Point the way it is, so I had. Had some thoughts on some of the options, it was very nice presentation, it was very, very good, showing the different options. Uh, I think moving the rotunda on land makes no sense at all to me, I'm just going to leave that at that. Uh, moving the rotunda out further out, I don't think is that good of an idea, uh one of the things that we talked about when they were putting the docks in. Was to get more room between the docks and the rotunda, so right now there's about forty feet and I think we're going to lose a. Most of that if it gets moved out, I don't know if I could share my screen for a second to show a cartoon?
Um, I.
Is that possible or not?
I think that would be awkward.
Okay, all right, so so right now a lot of people bring their boats in. And there's plenty of room to get into that inner dock and that's going to be really constricted if we move the dock, move the rotunda out. Especially if someone ties up to the uh to the end of the dock between the rotunda and the in the dock, that's going to cause a lot of problems. Um, number four, the last, last one to me looked very attractive, raising it up two and a half feet and keeping the rotunda where it is. Preserves where the rotunda is, it leaves plenty of room for getting the boats inside and uh. The the design starts with a much slower slope than 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 uh with the higher. The higher height and it also gives the ability to uh reassess the height at a later ti- later date if we want to go higher or lower. Depending on how the actual sea level rise, you know, correlates with what their predictions were. So, that's my two cents.
Thank you very much.
Chris. So Chris Halli, Tenoldig Road. Um, I I don't know whether we should just dismiss putting it on land out of pan. Um, I don't know why it was built out there to begin with, most rotundas are on land to begin with.
Um, can I, can I interrupt and tell you why?
Sure.
Um, the chatter house used to be approximately where they're talking about putting the rotunda. Uh, and then the aqua built their building. And you couldn't see the ocean anymore from the chatter house and the town. Moved the chatter house to its current location and built the rotunda out much further than it currently goes, so that the town people. And not just the aqua, but a view of of the of the harbor and the and the.
So where they would talk about relocate, the rotunda would give you plenty of view of the harbor. And you could always walk out of the dock if you wanted to see the wide open ocean. Uh, uh, I just from a, just a totally practical point of view. Doesn't it make sense to put the darn thing on land, so we don't have to worry about it anymore? Uh, it's going to look very different with steel piles and up, you know, five feet higher, it's not going to be. The way we remember it or the way it looks now, so. Uh, I I just think we should think about this more carefully than just.
Um. I I I think we, you haven't heard anyone. It's not saying anything yet.
Not from the board.
Not from our board, but, 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 yes, okay. Thank you.
Are there any further comments? Um, I assume we will be visiting this.
Another, um.
Comment.
Carly has her hand up.
And it's it's more of a question, and that would be, um. Is it possible to do a survey? Have, you know, put it out and with cost or estimated cost that people understand. Costs involved or or estimated costs and what? What do they?
Firstly, I think I'd like to see a little more detail.
Yes.
Um, and 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 a little more public outreach before we do a survey.
Yep, makes sense.
I agree with that, um my only comment would be that when we. Get further along in the process, in addition to the grants, I'm wondering if we can put some of our committees to work here. Um, I mean the. The rotunda is important for, um, you know, cultural, historical reasons, whether, I don't know whether or not community preservation.
Yes, community preservation has has approached me to say that this is a project, one of the reasons that they would like to increase their percentage. But yes.
I think this would, we could put my, so my comment is, I think we could put our committees to work to maybe flesh out some of the details if possible. And then also, um, you know, good old fashioned fundraising, um, I I would like to see us use that for at least a portion of the cost. Um, rather than um relying on taxation as a first bucket we go to.
I agree. Where have you said, Carly? Carly?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Identify yourself and give us your address, please.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, okay, One Mask and Almost Street, and I I think you maybe answered my question, there's going to be some more diligence done before a final decision's made about. You know, which. about, you know, which, which option we go with, perhaps. You know, at the end of the day, I guess, who's left to make the decision? Is it the voters or is it the select board?
I think we would not put forward four choices to the voters. But certainly a project of this size has to go in front of town meeting because it requires, even if we do very successful fundraising and very successful grant raising, there is significant town funds that will need to be. Yes, the voters will get to say, but no, we're not going to do this at a fine granularity.
Well, I guess regardless, something needs to be done, and it's going to involve a cost. So if, if it's for anything, I would prefer not to see it on land. And if it involves me having to go out and help fundraise for the town, I'd be happy to do that. I'm sure there's a lot of people in town that would be willing to do so.
Thank you. Could we just ask for her last name on? I mean, she's got the first name, it's not full name.
You want my la- my last name's Cook.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Just for the minutes, that way the person transcribes the minutes, has the information.
That's not a problem. Thank you.
Karen, is your hand up?
It is. Karen Bennett, twenty-eight Lincoln. Do we have to build to one hundred year storm, hundred year storm requirement to qualify for the grants? Does anyone know?
Yes.
Hundred year requirement?
Hundred years, the current standard for most of, that is changing. Some agencies are going to the five hundred year. So it's a little bit in flux right now.
And, and I just add that the, the current grant structure does not mandate that. So that, right now, that is still a flexible component of, of the grant applications for both the Seaport Economic Council and CZM Coastal Resiliency Grants.
Chuck Weisner has his hand up.
Hi, Chuck Wisner, sixteen Highland Avenue. Can y'all hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I was, when I first heard about this, I had a visual trigger about it would have to be in the water. And then I spent a fair amount of time out there imagining what it would look like to move it out, getting close to the, to the waterways and raising it up. And then I went back and stood on the knoll, and I was quite, quite surprised to find that the east end of, the east end of the island, of Baker's Island is still visible, and so is a, a fair amount of the bay. So I would suggest that for the engineers or the, the planners, that can we see the location of the rotunda in context with the chowder house? Because depending on the orientation, the chowder house faces one way so that the, the rotunda wouldn't block a view of the chowder house. And then also, I think, just some visuals that would help people appreciate how it would feel to be on the, on, on land with the, with the rotunda. And then my, my question I have is, if this is going to go ahead, does it make sense before the decision is made? Or can we apply for a grant before the decision is made? Or is that, do we have to have all the decisions made? Thank you.
I can, I can answer the last question. So right now, there is approved grant funding through the Seaport Economic Council for the engineering permitting, final design and bid phase component of this project to get it into construction. So there's already money that's been awarded to the town through Seaport Economic Council. There is no current monies being appropriated through the coastal resiliency grant program at this time. But there already is seaport money invested in, in this phase of the project, which again will take this project out to bid. And the idea would be at that time or in sequence when the planning, the planning efforts are confirming when construction will happen, target going after additional seaport grant money for the construction phase, if that makes sense.
Okay, and, and, and of the amount, the steel framing costs two point five or one point seven five, what, what is the current funding?
So there, there's no current funding in place for construction. This is all being funded to do the initial evaluations, conceptual alternatives, to select an alternative to advance into permitting, and then a final design and public bid phase. So there's no construction money that's been appropriated because a preferred alternative has not been yet selected. So that, this is really the first step out of the gate to prepare these conceptual alternatives for the town's consideration so that a decision can be made on the next step forward. And that's really where we're at right now.
So at what phase you, at what phase can you apply for the grant?
It would be for construction funding.
Okay, thank you.
So I'll jump in and kind of frame how I, you know, I envision kind of the next steps that we take forward. You know, we certainly want to solicit as much public opinion and feedback as possible. So I'm, I'm thinking we do a, you know, a, a public forum strictly for this project and advertise it through our committees and on all of our social. You know, probably looking at sometime in, in mid-July. But I think it would be helpful to have, you know, if we want to, I guess, feedback from the select board of, if there are any alternatives we would not want to bring forward or identify the alternatives that we would want to focus on, I think would help, you know, kind of steer the conversation into a more productive, you know, venue. So that's kind of where I, I see, you know, kind of the next steps to, to progress this project so we can get to, you know, an alternative that we are going to move forward into design, and then we can take forward to the permitting agencies. You know, because we can, can kind of concurrently, once we have those alternatives and we're working on the permitting and we know our path, that's when we can really start to apply for all of these grants.
Exactly.
Thank you, mate.
Sandy Rogers, is your hand up?
Yes, Sandy.
Hi, thanks. Sandy Rogers, eighty-two Old Essex Road. I have a question in that if we move the rotunda up, which we need to do for rising tides, we're going to have a lot of low tides that we have a lot more exposure, especially underneath the rotunda. And I was curious if there were any tactics to protect the underneath of the rotunda. We don't want, you know, obviously people getting hurt, but, you know, people could go under there a lot, could cause some damage. I didn't know if that was a design element that you were looking at because we'll be looking at this up high with a lot of the low tides, and people will go wandering around there.
So one of the benefits with going with the steel framing is that we can reduce the number of piles quite dramatically. So in terms of things that people could, could, you know, yeah, I think Ben's pulling up the section here. Yeah. Yeah, you can see how, you know, on the top, we, if that's, if we use timber framing, we would have twenty-one piles versus if we went with the steel framing, we would only have nine piles. So, you know, that is one way we can reduce, you know, it'd be less than what is, is, exists, existing out there right now.
If you zoom in, you can see all the shaded, really light line work. Those are all your existing piles now. So you can really see kind of the web of piles. They're, they're very tightly spaced compared to what this particular alternative is really limiting the number of piles that you would see. So there is a, a significant difference.
Madam Chair, in order to move things along, because I think we're getting into a lot of detail that is going to get. Nate has a very specific question, which I wonder if we can answer that and then close discussion. And the question was, would we want to eliminate any options for that public outreach?
And I had, I had a comment on Nate's comment, which is, I think that July is very optimal, optimistic, given the amount of public education we need to do before we even have the need for diagrams that are more illustrative of the views. I, you know, I, I, I think we are not going to look at a July timeframe for a plan. And I think you're right, we are getting into details that the, the construction of the understructure is, is really beyond. I think we have a great deal of information. The information is going out. It's on the website. People can look at it and we can think about it. And I don't know whether it would be, probably the seventeenth of July would be a better, a good time for us to come back. Bring it to those of us who are liaisons, bring it to our committees and say, look, this is, you should look at these plans and think about what this means. Unless there is someone in the audience or someone here who has a new suggestion, I suggest that we close down.
Can we have the, just the package itself be emailed?
Yep.
Thank you.
So that we can take an action to follow up at our July seventeenth meeting.
Yes.
Great idea.
And I don't think we need to be cutting down at this.
Having heard an argument for each of the alternatives, I think you're right.
Yep.
Okay. That was good, though.
Thank you very much. Excellent presentation. Excellent, and, and excellent follow-up on all the questions. We've got a lot of information to deal with.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Malcolm, did you have a comment? Okay, the next item on our agenda is the Water Resource Protection Task Force update.
Let's see, I can cover that. Dave, are you here for? Oh, here we are.
Eleven Will. Can you hear me?
Yes.
We can, Steve.
We hear you, we see you.
Yeah, I see several of me. Whatever that's worth. Doesn't make me twice as handsome, no, not at all. Well, thank you for allowing us time. We, we are happy to say that we are on schedule to complete the task force work in the eighteen months that you gave us to do this work. We ended up, I think, covering more ground than we expected. And that, you may see that reflected in the length of our final report, which, a draft of which you have tonight. And of course, I don't intend for to go through much of that or to have you expect that you have questions about it because you only received it today. And in fact, we're going to have the last meeting of our task. The last meeting of our task force approved the, the full report. They've already approved the executive summary. It's really the executive summary that I like to focus on tonight in order to highlight the recommendations that we think are most urgent and, and worth your considering tonight or at your next meeting. So if I can share a screen, which is not currently possible. Want to make me a co-host or liberate the screen share? Yep, I was just, I was looking for your name, but you're under Manchester One. I can fix that. Okay, you should be good. Okay. Right, thank you. Here we go. So we came up with eleven key recommendations, and I want to highlight four of them tonight, which the task force regards as worthy of enacting right away. The first is to, to designate who's going to carry the responsibility for pursuing ongoing work with some of the recommendations, particularly the ones related to the effort to make people more engaged, more likely to conserve drinking water. And that's number one. And as I have understood from our conversations, your inclination is to delegate this to the Sustainability Committee, which presently has, I think, three open seats, maybe two. And we recommend designating three people. One, to have a focus on the, the conservation efforts as an analytic tool on the water meters as well. And two, to have, second person to have an outward focus on conservation and education and communication. And the third person to provide liaison with you folks and, and other, other parts of town government. So that's number one. Number two is to change the water rates to encourage conservation. We've been through these, I think, in some detail, but you may still have some questions. What you see on your screen at the bottom here is the summary of what we're proposing for your consideration right now, which is to reduce the number of tiers from six to four, to reduce the rate in tier one, which covers more than half, will cover more than half of the households and commercial businesses in town, to change slightly the rate and the definition of tier two. A new tier three that will be roughly twice as expensive per unit. And tier four also a little bit more than twice as expensive. You also asked us to, to get ready a communicational letter to go out to people who are likely.
A moment. On the tiers, when you distributed a list of, of the people in tier four, who would be in here for many, many of the multifamily dwellings in town were falling into tier four, not because they were using excessive water, but because there were multiple units in a single on a one meter. What is the task, does the task force have a way of dealing with this?
We certainly do in, in, in this stage of notifying them, which is we can flag them, and we flagged, I think, thirty or thirty-five multi-unit on a single meter in that group of four hundred and forty. I don't think very many of them were in tier four, but you could be right. In any event, we would simply divide by the number of units, their historical use in order. And as, as you're saying, in almost every case, that would take them out of the group of roughly four hundred residences and businesses that we've identified. So they would not get this communication. But beyond that, it's an important shift in the, in the billing structure that we've recommended to the Water Division that particularly as we change, as you change the tiers, that the designation of tiers in a multifamily, multi-unit property be defined by the per, per unit usage and not by the total property usage.
So is that something that the task force will do? Is that something that the DVW needs to do?
It's either the DPW or a software supplier, bill, bill provider. I don't, I don't actually know the mechanics of how those bills get generated. Maybe Nate or Chuck, if you're online.
I would think it's something we can work into the billing that when we have the account, we know we can divide that number by, you know, X and come up with the individual units. You know, I think we would just want some way of verifying the number of units at, you know, per each address. And, you know, I think that's something that we could certainly work out as we move forward.
Yep, we, we'd volun- we'd volunteer to do some of the lifting on that with the assessor or anybody else. We need to get it confirmed by, but as I said, we've already checkmarked the, what we think are thirty to thirty-five multi-unit users that are on a single meter in that top list. uh, users that are on a single meter in that top list. So yeah, it's, it's very much worth, um, getting that right. I think otherwise we'll be aiming the conservation efforts very much in the wrong place. Other questions before I plunge ahead here? Okay, thank you. This third recommendation to increase awareness and education about conservation is also, we think, urgent. And there are lots of opportunities here, um, partly because of the the rather large amount of water that we've used historically, um, and what we perceived as a pretty, pretty good response to, uh, water voluntary water restrictions, um, last year. So that says there is an opportunity for people to learn more about how they might, uh, particularly the heavy users, how they might change their irrigation practices, um, how they might change their landscaping. And, uh, finally, how they might source their own irrigation water. And we'll, uh, we'll see, it's not, as you know, it's not a large number. 440 is a generous kind of allowing for a lot of, say, 400 without the multi-units. Uh, it's really about a hundred. And almost entirely residential properties that are, um, using very large amounts of drinking water for irrigation in the summer. And I expect some of them will be very receptive, others not at all receptive. And there'll be some mixture of response to the changes in price and response to the offers of, ways they can improve, but one way or another, we're going to try to put all that in front of all of those users and not neglect the rest of the town, although the opportunities for conservation, I think, are down the road a bit with the majority of households. But in any event, that's an area where we can do work and in fact spend some of our budget um, in whatever format we are continuing this. And the, the fourth area we recommend, um, taking immediate action. It falls under the heading of upgrade, accelerating the replacement and upgrade of the infrastructure. And it is focused on the new water meters. We are, um, virtually ready to launch a pilot comparing two vendors head to head, thanks to the good work of Nate and Chuck lining these guys up. They have, um, variations on the same technology, which is the advanced digital, um, meter that, uh, fewer, fewer, uh, moving parts, less vulnerable to the contaminants that we have in our water. And they offer, uh, almost real-time information over a smartphone app to the users. So part of the pilot test will be to determine do people actually use those apps? And do they find them easy or difficult, useful or useless? Uh, we designed this as a six-month pilot test. And in fact, if you've read the draft we created for, uh, notifying the top uh, 400, uh, users, it, uh, actually starts out with an offer to, to join us as test pilots. And then points out that this might be particularly important to them because they are among the large users. So that would be the fourth area. You can see those somewhat summarized here in the highlighted areas. Sorry, there is actually a fifth. We'd recommend beginning the work to look at the options for a third uh, primary source of water, not that we need it today, but Manchester has a spectacular legacy of planning far ahead in terms of providing water supply that's clean and reliable. And we think to continue that legacy right now is the time to start examining through, uh, geology and, and some test wells, the opportunity for another source that makes sense, uh, in terms of the location of our infrastructure. So none of these things has a large price tag attached to them. Uh, we have a small $30,000, I think, allocation in the coming fiscal year, and we have about twice that in unspent funds from our, um, 18 months of work. And we propose to employ that net amount, which is probably around $75,000 when the dust settles to accomplish, uh, these things. Particularly with a particular emphasis on those four or five, we think are urgent. Let me stop there. There's, uh, as you know, there's pages of detailed findings behind these recommendations and the summary of findings. And if you'd like, I'm happy to plunge into those, but I'd also just appreciate your feedback on this particular selection of priorities.
Thank you.
John? Well, uh, you know, I don't want to preach the choir or anything. I'm certainly, I've, uh, I, 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 as part of the water task force, I'm aware of all of these findings and I heartily recommend the ones that, um, that Steve has indicated as being the ones that which, which we should focus on immediately. And we're prepared to do so. And I think that we can start to make a difference in water use, uh, right off the bat here. And furthermore, uh, start to make some progress with regard to the water, water in our future.
Those the ones in highlighted in yellow?
It's, it's one, two, Steve really, uh, yes, they are, but it's one, two, three and five. So they're in yellow, but not entirely, there's some other things in there. Excuse me.
The other one is, uh, the meters. Yeah, the, the other one is the meter. So it's, uh, exploratory, new sources, the three conservation, two conservation areas convening the, uh, this is the, the new, new function of the sustainability committee. And we think there's room for a little subsidy to the pilot test because it turns out that, um, some of the heavy users, as, as Nate and Chuck have informed us, probably have more, slightly more complicated setups for their feeder lines and, and current meters. So it, it, um, may require a little bit more expenditure to get a test meter on their lines, but it's very important to have a spectrum of users from, uh, the heavy users to the, the real people who are already, you know, conservators, let's call them, light users.
I will make, I will add to that, that one thing that Chuck and Nate in particularly are interested in is these new meters provide an element of, um, uh, automation and through apps, et cetera, where you can really take a look at that and uh, user, the user-friendly interface there is something they're interested in getting feedback on as well, so.
One step. Greg, what is involved in transferring money that has been allocated for the Water Resource Protection Task Force to other purposes?
Well, if you want it unrelated to water, we'll go back to the those in the fund allowance and it's reallocated by another vote. If you, if you feel it's a continuation of the work of the task force, but under a different group, then I, I don't think there's a problem continuing on with that.
Okay.
So it wasn't, it's really the purposes of the task force that the money's assigned to, not.
Not specific.
Yeah.
Not the task force.
Right, if there's a new iteration of who the task force is, that's okay, as long as it's still being used for similar purposes.
Okay, so education, for example, or?
Yeah, the conservation, education, yes.
Supporting the meter task, okay.
Yep, that would be fine.
Good. And I just, yes, what I just wanted to say. A huge thank you to everybody involved in this group. What a huge lift. I mean, reading through everything that I've had so far, it's just amazing work and.
Yeah, I'm going to second that. It, it really restored my faith in the idea of citizen volunteers who bring energy, but they also bring considerable expertise in terms of engineers like John Round, lawyers like Mike Carvalho and biologists like Lynn Atkinson, um, data scientists like Gordon Turner. We, we were just very, well, we're very grateful.
But the most, who knows, really, should really go to Steve as the leader of the group. He's been very, very, uh, he's, he's, he's been on top of all of these issues and, uh, has really helped to educate, educate all of us. Yeah, on the task force in terms of.
Well, thank you.
What we should be looking at.
My wife will be glad if I don't. My wife will be glad if I don't mention drinking water for the next six months. We should also have a, a, another shout out. You can't have enough of these to Chuck Dam and make derosures. Because, uh, we have an exceptional, um, management and leadership team there.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, just a, a thank you again. I, I agree the work, this is an exceptionally thorough and informative or final report. So I'm very thankful for that. One quick, um, little piece of feedback on the proposed letter that, um, is, is proposed to be sent to the heaviest users of drinking water. I, I'd ask, um, you know, think about re-sequencing some of the things in your message. You're kind of burying the lead, so to speak.
Um, yes.
You know, if you're going to get my attention, starting out with the fact that, hey, you know, um, you're likely to see us an increase in your water bill, but we're here to help, right? As opposed to not mentioning the increase in the water bill until like the second or third paragraph. So just, I would suggest to make sure you get the retention, um, because I think it's a really important letter.
Okay, yeah, that, so you didn't like the kind of easing in soft pedaling approach, I understand.
In the summer, people might, you know, not read the whole thing. And, and, and the most important part is we don't want them to miss out on opportunity on something that could really save them a lot of money.
What's the adage, uh, because next best thing to good news is bad news fast?
Yeah.
Well put. Um, and Kathy, there's one thing I have to show you because, uh, I know other people may appreciate it, but you in particular, well, if I can get it to, uh.
Is it a timeline?
Yeah, that's exactly what it is. So we're, this is not by any means complete, but it's the template for what we're going to, uh, use. Get it to appear on my screen here. And it, you know, it's just a, a work plan and timetable in clearly standard terms.
Thank you, Steve.
It's the way, it's the way we're going to keep these trains running on time.
You can send it to us offline.
So there it is.
Oh, beautiful.
Each major task has broken down into subtasks that'll be assigned to, to, uh, different timetables. You know, these, these are placeholders right now, but the first step of implementation is to make this thing right and start managing by it.
And so then it would, this oversight would be turned over to DPW or a sustainability for certain.
Well, you know, ideally we'd have somebody on the sustainability committee who, who feels ready to, to cheer, he can.
That, that, yeah, that was my only other comment is just making sure that the recommendations have clear owners. So we know who's following up on what and, and, um, I think that's maybe more.
Yeah, that's this suspiciously empty column right now called assigned to. But yeah, it should all be there.
Like the sustainability, right, so it's, you know.
Thank you.
Other questions from, other questions from the board? Questions from anyone else?
Uh, just question or comment. So the process now, we have, we have water rates that are proposed. And we've got this letter and this letter will go out in the next, say, week. And then we vote on July 6th. And I mean, I suppose we could get some feedback on the letter by that time. If there's some people say, oh, what's going on? Although I don't think it's all that shocking, but, um, that's the, that is the sequence of events here.
Yeah, that's it.
Hey.
Jeff Koschamp, 15 Vine Street.
Excuse me, Jeff.
Um, what about the, uh, meter pilot program? What about the schedule of that?
Is.
That's immediate also. I don't know how it implements itself. I think maybe just give approval to Chuck Dam to proceed. Maybe we need to assign some of that money.
Is Chuck on there?
Or, or just a question for Greg. What is it that the select board needs to approve tonight, if any?
Well, if you want, if you want the new metering program to get underway sooner as a layer, you could, you could approve dollars for that.
Which we have in the, in those remaining funds because I'm helping that.
Do you have an amount?
The amount, yeah.
But you have the total, but if we are going to authorize something for meters.
Yeah. So, so it's really. It, it's really going to be dependent on the number of large users that we get. Um, that's where the big cost comes in with the larger meter. Like, so the program and scope that we had gotten from the, the two meter companies included 10 5/8 inch meters. And, you know, it was a total cost of, I think, between 2 and 3,000. Um, but a single inch and a half meter, which many of the larger users have, or even larger, they might have like a two inch meter. I think the inch and a half meter was like $815 for a single one. So if we do get multiple of these larger users, that's really where I think we would need the additional funds to just kind of cover that gap of, you know, where we thought the 2 to $3,000 range that we thought these were going to be in versus, you know, potentially a little bit more, um, than that. If that helps. So it's really, we, you know, once we have the list of users, we can diff, you know, identify what specific meters we'll need and then we can have a cost.
And we agree that we are going to start the program, but, and then find out, um, how much of the funds we need to transfer? Is there some way to get things started without having the cash in hand?
Well, we have the cash, it's just a question of.
It hasn't been.
Do you need us to take a vote on a not to exceed number in order to get things?
I don't think so.
The money is there.
I'm comfortable with you, um, taking your vote to authorize proceeding with a pilot program for the meters. And we will come back to you with, with financing.
All right.
Uh, details as, as needed.
And in discussions with Chuck, he had the money. He wasn't worried about appropriations. He just spent the money because it's not very much and except for what Nate has just mentioned.
I move to start the, um, pilot, uh, water meter program using available funds from DPW.
Second.
Where's the discussion? Hearing them, Brian?
Yes.
Becky, yes. Kathy, yes. I vote yes.
Yes.
Okay. Um, is that, is there anything else that we need to do now?
So, so the only other thing is, um, are you on board with proceeding with the rates as proposed? Or, or do you want another variation? When, is what you, what is proposed, are you comfortable with that proceeding with your region? That's.
Personally, I am comfortable as long as someone goes to the assessors or whoever and finds all of the places where it's multifamily. I don't want to do.
Exactly.
Pivoted rate to multifamily, that's right. And, and I, I would just wait and vote on it at our next meeting. Yeah, not asking for a change in the numbers, but asking for progress on making sure that the rates are applied to the people who should look at conservation.
I also, um, have, Nate, have you and Chuck weighed in on, um, the rates, the proposed rates?
Yeah, we reviewed it and, you know, I think we're, you know, generally in agreement. Um, you know, we certainly need to, to raise revenue with, uh, the amount of capital that we have in the coming years. And this is certainly a, a good step forward in, in doing that.
Thank you.
Jeff Koschamp, 15 Vine Street. The rate structures that we went through there, they were the culmination of a heck of a lot of work in proven in other communities, including in Massachusetts. So I think those are pretty solid, that's a pretty solid structure proven in some ways.
So it's certainly the first, first step, first phase for sure.
And I'll, I'll add that the FinCom tonight, um, just expressed approval, you know, informal, uh, round the table response to seeing those proposed rates.
So Greg, do you need us to take a formal vote to bring these rates forward to the meeting? Or we don't vote on anything tonight and just vote on July 6th?
Yeah, I, I'm okay with, with sort of bowing your heads, proceed.
Nice work.
Okay, thank you.
Great.
Thank you for providing us with bedtime reading for the next week.
Okay, good. You don't feel the need to have a red pencil with you, although I won't stop you if you're compelled.
Five letter to the head users. Okay, um. We're only an hour behind now. The next discussion is the flagpole. Right as well.
So you you approved moving forward with a second flagpole for commemorative purposes uh on the town green and suggested. So a suggested location is um is uh behind the fountain, behind the benches that are surrounding the fountain. Out closer to the uh, closer to Central Street. For our uh, our uh, the sodium came across a collapsible pole option that um I thought would warrant some further review. I I don't, I just need a little more details about how tall they, it actually is, what options there are. And uh, but that was one possibility where obviously you can go with a a a standard pole that is, that stays up at a trigger height the whole time. We don't have a lot of requests for member flags. Uh, that may grow over time. It's hard to, hard to predict. So that's because because we don't have a lot of requests, the the collapsible pole and telescoping pole was, I thought, an intriguing idea.
This collapsible pole, when it collapses, what is its height?
Well, it's, I was trying to find that on the spec sheet. I'm assuming it's, I'm I'm assuming it's like three or four feet.
Yeah.
I'm thinking, what is it, is it permanent?
You can do either.
About a three foot pole sticking up in the middle there. Well, again, that's worth researching, I guess.
So I I'd be interested in knowing.
Yeah, I was too. I didn't see the inspection.
But it goes up twenty one feet, or at least this is what.
I think you have, I think you have different options.
Oh, okay.
And and yeah, we don't want to be taller than the one that's there now.
Which is not very high.
This is starting from the lower spot, so.
Right, there's a little lower down elevation.
Okay.
An interesting idea. I guess we need more information.
Okay.
Okay, we'll pull together.
Yeah.
Try to get the the details and give you a couple of options. In terms of location. Seems viable.
And this is again down by the fountain.
They kind of are out on the front. They could take a walk.
Okay, next is um special town meeting motions and assignments. Is it possible to just pop up the food trucks since? Oh, sure. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes. Yes. Teresa Maldon, Mascanomo Street. And I submitted a proposal to the select board about um requesting permission to have a food truck on town property for town elections. So the next one would not be until March fifth, I believe. But um I would suggest that having food truck will bring more people to the polls. Most of our voters come between the hours of four and seven PM on their way home from four hundred and seventy. So um you could, they could stop, vote, grab dinner, and go home. And that would save them time. Because as you know, with your children, once you're home, you don't go out. So this would save time. It would encourage more people to vote. It could become an event. And uh it won't take up much space. Most of the trucks are, it's like sixteen feet long, seven feet wide, which is just smaller than a parking space. So it would take up two spaces minimum, you know, one for the truck, one for people to gather in front. Perhaps three spaces ideally. It would sit there from four until eight PM when the polls close and costs have nothing. It would not require any electricity or water because these trucks have generators. They go back to their sites and they clean up, charge their batteries, and um and load their water tanks. And um you know, I don't believe there would even be any trash because the whole, you can't bring the food into the polls. So you, you vote, you shop. First of all, I love this, Teresa. I think it's such a great idea. Um, very fun. And and it said, I did read where you wrote that um trash removal is responsibility of the truck. Does that mean they they place bins outside of the truck and then? Some trucks do, but um we could place a bin out there. Uh, but I don't think, in March especially, I don't think anyone's going to be nauseating out there. I think they're gonna take it, take it home and being their family, like woo-hoo, takeout. Absolutely. And there are many, you know, a lot of choices for food trucks that are just, you know, in the area, Middleton, Peabody, Danvers. So we start with one, this catches on and we get lots of people, maybe by October, we're two trucks. And I think too, in order to make it uh, in order for folks to understand that this isn't happening, I put it in the cricket. I have flyers made, you know, on my own to put in all the area businesses, at the churches, at the library, everywhere. So yeah, what's happening?
So the only other question with that, um, that the town clerk did bring up the proximity to the, to the actual polling. And sometimes I know that you have, you can't have political signs within a certain um proximity. And she said she had some concerns about that. Greg, did you have any more information from her on that?
So I think, so yeah, she was just concerned about congestion. Parking space. Far enough away from that entrance.
Right.
And as you indicated, it would seem that people were going to do it after they vote, not before. Um, I think, I think those concerns might be able to be minimized.
And the only signage we would put up, perhaps, is just, did you vote?
Right.
A member of both. The whole goal is to get people.
And the only way they can buy a sandwich.
Always come out with their sticker.
I love the idea. I think it's great. Um, is the only um condition, I would just make sure that there are no political signs on the truck. Um, other than that, I think it's a great idea.
To meet more issues, we, yeah, um.
So you would, you would need to grant a hawkers license to the, to the actual vendor.
Okay.
We're proposing this.
So, so.
So, yeah, again, it sounds like there's a nodding aheads that this is a positive thing to forward, but as we get closer to the actual election day, um, the the actual truck vendors would want to apply for that license. And then you you could approve those licenses, you know.
So we don't need to take?
Official action now, except that you're giving a green license.
And so how far ahead of that?
Yeah, you know, a couple of months, more than enough time.
So maybe right after the first of the year?
Yes.
After the holidays.
And is there a cost for this, the license?
Well, it might be uh twenty five or fifty dollars, something like that.
Probably not unusual for them anyway.
Is this done through the clerk's office, through who's office?
Through the Swett Woods office.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So in January, I will come back. Or you can email Debbie, who is the kind of the um administrative assistant. Just say, ask her.
Yeah.
Stop moving.
Vendor's license for that.
It is. So then each, each election, a new vendor's license needs to be applied.
Yeah.
Oh, the vendor's license is per event. It's not per period of time.
Well, there's two types.
One day.
There's a, there's a one event, yeah, one day event type license, or you can get a seasonal license. Um, the season is going to be more expensive.
Yeah. Thank you very, very much. Excellent. Thanks, Teresa.
You're welcome.
I certainly will.
Good idea.
Thank you. Okay, now we
Town meetings.
Town meeting assignments. And for article one. Yeah, that will be moved by somebody from the school.
School committee.
Um, Annalyn Mitchell for Washington One and then.
So there are two, two sub motions.
Right, um. Article two is the four hundred thousand dollars um from the savings uh to the heels. Is anyone particularly going to take up that one?
To the school committee.
Discuss it twice, but the third time it'd be in the middle of it.
Um, who would say?
I'll second.
Okay. Article three, which is the vine, um, and that that will be someone from the planning board.
Typically, it's the chair.
So similarly, articles for and article five. And the latter truck.
So this one, the motion, needs to be slightly amended from what the article, how the article reads in the law. So right now, it's saying that the one hundred eighty thousand from the proceeds would be directly used. It it's a little more indirect. So so the state deal, our Department of Revenue wants to see those, the proceeds flow in the fund balance, and then you're actually taking that one hundred and eighty out of fund balance.
Was there a motion to actually amend the article?
So the motion would just say, would state that is slightly different from the, from the wording in the, in the article.
On the floor though, right?
Yes. Yeah, but we'll give the, we can give that wording to Alan ahead of time. And so that, so that's one change. And then the second change is the, the
ambulance.
The ambulance is four hundred and fifty thousand, two hundred and seventy, not four hundred.
Do these so-called quote amendments need a vote, or is it just a clarification?
So it can be part of the the motion that's made.
Okay.
Um, even though it differs slightly from the
Alright, so what's printed?
But it's, it's, it's within the scope.
Okay.
And now with no confirmation that he is okay with it as the main motion rather than have a two-step process, right?
All right, I will take that.
You're doing article six or the motion to the the amendment?
It's not exactly an amendment, but the motion doesn't match the article, but it is within the four corners. So we make a motion that's correct, and the motion that will be shown, shown on the screen will be correct.
And and unless Alan objects, that'll be the end of it. We won't have to take a separate vote.
But just in your explanation, you can explain this like variation.
Okay.
Do you want me to second that?
And the final, which is the um salary reserve account.
I'll second.
Great.
Um, and now we are at the police chief and fire chief.
Yeah, so one at a time. Um, so for um police chief, so it's a second, three-year contract for for part. And it is very, very similar to the existing contract, however, it is for the three years. Um, and, you know, consistent with what was anticipated in this previous contract. Um, consists with the police union contractors, we have moved to full funding of what's called the Quinn, but it's an education incentive. Um, so there's um state law, just called the Quinn, Quinnville, um education incentive provides for ten, twenty, or twenty-five percent incentives depending on your level of education, associates, bachelors, and masters. So um we have wrapped that up, and so he would be eligible for the twenty percent of bachelor's incentive. It it is a bachelor's.
Oh.
Yeah, yeah, I did confirm that. I I actually made that mistake in writing the first draft. So yes, um, so then it's uh, it's still calls for the same quarterly reviews. It's uh, it's cheaper like to continue. He has found those valuable and and helpful. I I think you have as well. And provides for uh, a one percent or a two percent, and then in year three, it leaves it open depending on the across-the-board department and for the colon. So it does leave that third year undefined uh pending what the, what the average would be, the majority of department head would be getting in that, in that year three. Other than that, it mirrors the existing, existing contract.
I'm just curious, is there um we're, we're, we're going the full three years?
Yes, I mean, there's always, there is a clause for for early termination if if necessary. Um, but all of our contracts have that provision.
But Todd wanted to, he, that's his preference?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, he does anticipate retiring after, after those, after the three years.
I move to approve the police chief's contract.
Is there a discussion? Meeting ready for votes. Brian?
Yes.
Becky?
Absolutely.
Kathy?
Yes.
Can I say yes?
Yes.
So, fire chief's contract?
So fire chief contract, um, again, similarly, it's based off of the existing contract that we had with Chief Clary. It does provide for uh uh, the first year as as a salary, uh, which was um very similar to what was budgeted for for this coming year. And then it does provide those two increases that are that the other unions and the, soon to be for the, for the department has as well. So that three percent in year two. Provides for the formative views with you as a board and and me. And again, similar provisions, uh, provides for. As the old contracts have in the past, for continuing professional development. Uh, with this, so long as there's sufficient funds appropriations for those. It allows for outside employment, as long as that employment doesn't interfere with the normal duties of the chief. Uh, again, subject to review. And. Uh, provide for the use of the chief vehicle. For every use for incidental local use, because at any time we call it. So if he's doing errand in the in the town tire, that's that's okay, because he could be getting a call and he would. Dash into that emergency.
But if he goes on vacation, he.
Correct. So.
Taking it down east.
So it's, yeah, it specifically says incidental use within the county is fine, or if there's a. Uh, work-related trip outside of the county, that that is also okay, but it has to be work-related.
Do you like the motion to approve? Was going to ask if there was any discussion, but any further discussion, but I will take a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All right, nice to have a competitor. Further discussion. Ready for the vote, Brian?
Yes.
Becky?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
I vote yes.
John votes yes.
So thank you. I think it. Our public safety departments are in in strong shape, pleased that we have. I think we have two very strong chiefs.
Yeah.
Ready to ready to continue to serve and ready to serve. I'm pleased that it has gone as smoothly as it has, quite frankly. So it's the relation.
Didn't work that way a couple of years ago.
I think we I think we made some good targets.
We can say welcome Chief McNeely and. Yeah, again, Chief General.
Yes, yeah, praise praise the both and looking forward to continuing building the relationships. So thank you for that.
Some liaison reports, are there other? Anyone else want to talk about other committees?
Not to talk about, but just to. Clarify where we left the discussion on the liaison assignments. Do we complete everything and? Um, or do we need to kind of finalize some of those? I think we have a, so could we just take an action to put it on the next meeting to kind of?
I think it'd be easier after the governance.
Yes, yeah, agreed.
Yeah, I think that was the thought. Followed up after that session.
I just didn't see it on the list, so.
Yeah, those should be on the list.
Thank you.
I I need to figure out a way of. Healing with presentations, and maybe we ought to talk at some point about setting expectations for people who are presenting. Because we have. What I'm going to schedule for something.
Yeah.
And and I think that's important, but.
But we often we often underestimate those.
Oh, well, it's not just that you underestimated, but they overconsume. And and I think perhaps when Debbie is setting things up.
Big guidelines.
She should.
But, yeah, we we do.
Well, and also three to five minutes per chart, so if they have more than. They're not, no, I'm just saying timeframe, that's benchmark, three to five minutes per chart, and if they got more charts than that.
You know, I think.
That allows for discussion and.
But what probably helps Dan is prefacing when somebody's going to put up a slideshow, how long, here's the deal.
I'm glad to do that.
In in advance and just say, you've got about X minutes.
It would be nice if they didn't come in with a two-hour presentation and 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 find out that they had ten minutes to do it.
Right.
So.
But they've they've told that in advance when you mention, and if we tell them again here.
But I think Debbie can also play a role in being a little bit of a gatekeeper. So if there's ten minutes assigned, they can't come in here with twenty charts. They get three charts. That's it.
She she could get back to them and say, there's a lot of stuff.
It's it's a little too much for the time allotted. Do you need more time? We'll have to push you out, or, you know, but I I think that would be a really helpful.
But addition, in addition, I think there's also a misunderstanding on the part of people who attend the meetings. And how. How the dialogue is supposed to go, and the reason the dialogue is supposed to go through the chair, it, you know, it's not, it's it's. To be able to keep things.
Yeah.
I. Put all firm about saying no.
Well, and people also don't under, they just don't understand that that, you know, in terms of how the meetings run. That that.
Their schedules.
Well, their schedules, but it's also how they're supposed to operate. That's part of.
We don't have two people talking to each other and leaving.
And that one gentleman asked some questions directly to the vendor.
Yeah. And and that's my fault, and I'm like, what happened again?
Do you need a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. May, ready for a vote. Brian?
Yes.
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Anne says yes.
John says yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Oh, we need some more signatures.
Some more?
They're all, they're all there. I just, I just had to.